Also from community services, there is a motion passed regarding the sign by law as it relates to the Niagara Parks Commission Act. And I also have a conflict on parts of PD 2007-14 on tonight's agenda, downtown revitalization. Just those parts relating to the downtown Eastern Gateway EA, it affects the Niagara Parks Commission as well. I have two members of my immediate family who work there.
Thank you. Counselor Maves?
I have conflict on check number 311-453. That's my place of employment.
Okay. And Counselor Carrio?
Thank you, Your Worship. Under the consent agenda, under sidewalk cafe licenses, PD 2007-54 and PD 2007-55, those two very popular sidewalk cafes are mine.
So noted, thank you. Counselor Fisher?
I have a conflict with check 311173 if it's a tax refund on a property I own.
Okay. And I have a conflict with regard to check number 311936 payable to myself. Members of council and those present, it's my pleasure to welcome team members and coaches from the Niagara Falls Red Raiders Bantam Boys Basketball Team to council this evening. The team captured a gold medal in Division Five at the Basketball Ontario Provincial Championships held in Scarborough during the weekend of April 21st and 22nd, 2007. At this time, I'd like to ask the team members and coaching staff to stand and come forward. I think they're walking in the door. Please, you know, you can just come forward a bit. We'll have you come up to the front if you just stand in front of the podium, that's great. The winning team members are Jan DeGracia, Eric DiProfetis, Luke Goulet, Carl Greco, Troy Northfield, Zach Ola, Andrew Oreskovic, Devon Remarchek, and Vito Skorinji. Team coaches are Dave Goulet and assistant is Rob Caparichi. During the championships in pool play, Niagara went 2-1, winning against Stratford Sonics 39-29 and against the Sarnia Shamrocks 38-15. Then they lost to Port Coburn 60-46. In the quarterfinals, Niagara played the second seed, Mississauga Mustangs, and won in the final seconds of the game by a close score of 39-37. The semifinal game was played against Cambridge, Niagara won 36-30. From there, the Red Raiders went on to the gold medal game where they faced the Blessed Sacrament Yellow Jackets. The game was tied at the end of regulation, 29-29. But in overtime, Niagara Falls went on an 8-0 run to win the gold medal with a score of 37-29. Team member Devon Remarchek was selected as MVP of the tournament with 22 points in the final game and his strong defensive and offensive play throughout the entire tournament. Congratulations to Devon and the entire Niagara Falls Red Raiders Bantam Boys Basketball Team. At this time, I'd like to ask the team coaches and the team as well to come forward in front of the podium to present it with special plaques for the members of council in the city of Niagara Falls to commemorate your success. (applause) I'd like to present this one to Dan DeGracia. Jan, sorry, Jan, congratulations, Jan. This is to Eric DiProfetis. Eric, congratulations. This is to Luke Goulet. Luke, congratulations. This is to Carl Greco. Congratulations, Carl. And this goes to Niagara, congratulations. And Troy Northfield. Troy is going to be right close to the chair. And Zach Ola. Zach, congratulations, Zach. And this is to Andrew Oreskovic. Congratulations. And this one is to Devon Remarchek. Devon, congratulations. And this is to Vito Skorinji. And to the coaches, we have one for Dave Goulet. Yes. Congratulations, Dave. And I believe then Rob, not Rob, not Rob. Ladies and gentlemen, we would like to present again the Niagara Falls Red Raiders Basketball Team. (applause)
I'd just like to thank the team for a well thought season and obviously the executive of Niagara Falls, boys and fans, the Red Niagara Raiders for what they provide, to provide the vehicle for us to participate and the parents, thank you very much for all the understanding throughout the season. And just my assistant coach, Rob Caparichi, who could be here, who put in tremendous model work as well. Thank you very much.
Mr. Clerk, could you introduce the next item in the agenda, please?
A public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw to permit a five-story, 49-unit condominium apartment dwelling at 2799 St. Paul Avenue. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, June 8th, 2007, and by posting a sign on the property in question, anyone who wants notice of the passage of the zoning bylaw amendment or to participate in any site plan process, if applicable, shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. At this time, I'd like to have the planning director explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment. Mr. Darvison?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The application this evening is by Wedgewood Builders of Niagara Limited. The property is located at 2799 St. Paul Avenue and the application is for a five-story, 49-unit condominium apartment building. The subject lands are located along St. Paul Avenue on the west side, just north of the Queen's Tavern and just south of Emma Street and the single-family neighborhood. The proposed application involves a five-story, 49-unit apartment building. Site-specific zoning has been applied for on the lands. The lands are currently zoned for a three-story, 32-unit building. Earlier this year, the applicant originally proposed a seven-story building, 68 units, held a public meeting with area residents, and due to the concerns raised at that time, this revised application has been submitted. Not a very good visual aid, but this is the proposed layout of the project. There's parking to the front, to the south side, and to the west, and the apartment building is located right in the middle. There's a mature line of trees directly to the south, which provides some visual screening to the Queen's Tavern, and new plantings are proposed along the north side. In terms of official plan, the property is designated for residential purposes in the official plan. Apartment buildings with heights of three to four stories may be permitted at the periphery of residential neighborhoods where they have access to arterial roads, which one does, are in close proximity of schools, parks, and neighborhood commercial areas. We are abutting here a walkway and a small neighborhood commercial plaza, and it's compatible with surrounding development. While the subject lands are suitable for apartments, the proposed five-story apartment building is not considered compatible with abutting single-family dwellings due to the overshadowing and loss of privacy it may have. In terms of zoning, the current zoning is for an apartment building. It's a residential 5A density zone. This zone, we need to be changed to a higher-density zone category, a 5C density zone. The current zoning does permit a 32-unit building, and the maximum height of that building could be 32.8 feet. Proposed zoning would permit 49 units and essentially doubling the height at 62.3 feet. It's our conclusion that the application amended zoning by law to permit a five-story, 49-unit apartment building on the site cannot be supported for the following reasons: it does not conform the residential policies of the official plan for citing taller apartment buildings; the height of the development would be out of character with the surrounding residential use. The applicant should consider reducing the height of the development and redesigning the development to ensure that it is compatible with the surrounding residential area. It's our recommendation this evening that council not support the proposed zoning bylaw amendment application for a five-story, 49-unit apartment building on the subject lands. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Darvison. Members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral written submission at this public meeting could result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referral that it receives if the party has not made an oral written submission at this public meeting. Council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment, and we ask you to state your name and adhere to the 10-minute rule, please. And I have a comment from Counsel Peter Angelo.
Thank you, Worship. And just a question to Mr. Darvison. Mr. Darvison, in your conclusion, your last point that you make, you recommend that the applicant consider reducing the height. I'm just wondering, actually, because I did talk to one of the applicants today who told me that they're going to be proposing changes to the actual application, I'm wondering if you've seen those changes at all or if you know that those changes are coming forward. I don't want to have a discussion, Your Worship, centered around a report that's, you know, I guess evaluating the essence of having a five-story building there if we're not going to have a five-story building there anyway, so.
That's fair. Mr. Darvison?
To you, Mr. Mayor. Well, indeed, we have seen just late last week, a copy of a site plan with a reduced building height being proposed. We did not see the elevation of that particular drawing. But in fairness to the public, we did notify the public of this proposed application, which is a five-story, 49-unit building, and that's the application we're considering tonight. This is a public hearing concerning that. Now, the developer may wish to introduce something new, as indicated by the alderman, maybe a lowering of the building height, but again, we're not talking about that this evening. We're talking about this particular application, which is a five-story application.
Thank you. Perhaps Counsel Peter Angelo has a good point, members of council. I would suggest to you, if the proponent was going to reduce the height, he should do so, but we should probably defer this back to after a point where he meets with the residents to hear their concerns. We don't know what numbers he's talking at this stage. Does council have any feeling with respect to that? Counsel Thompson?
Oh, I think we should proceed with the application. I think that the people have been notified. This is a five-story apartment building. I have some grave concerns with respect to the height, 62 feet. If this was, this is really double the size that is being recommended, and even if he comes back with a, say, a four-story, and if he still has 10-foot ceilings, I think I have a problem with the height restriction. So let's deal with this application, have the opportunity for the public to speak, make a definitive decision, and then if it wants to come back, then I suggest that a new application or be brought back again. I just was puzzled with this. When I read the report, it said that this was received approval in 2001, and I pride myself on the fact that I have a pretty good memory, and I could not remember this application coming in in 2001. Actually asked the clerk, and he checked on it, and the application was actually dealt with in 1988. Most of the people in Red Estates were not even there and didn't really have the opportunity to have input into a three-story application at that particular time. It came back in 2001, strictly the bylaw to deal with it, but whether it had the debate and the discussion at that particular time, I'm not really sure. And I didn't recall it, and I didn't recall concerns about it. So I think we should deal with this. It's, in my opinion, an application that has been advertised, and we should make a decision on that. If it comes back, we'll deal with that again.
Counsel?
Yes, Counsel? I never had any intention of doing away with a public meeting. I just simply want the public to be aware that I believe that the developer is not willing to go forward with a five-story building, so I wanted to know whether or not staff had any information on that.
And I don't think the residents are informed either. I haven't heard of a number as well, so I understand your point.
But we have to go through the public meeting, and we have to hear from the residents.
Sure. And we could render a decision that may be against the proponent if they wish to amend that. I don't know if they should have some discussion with staff and the members of the area residents, but that's another matter. Counsel DiDatti?
Oh, Your Worship, I just believe that since I believe the filling on this table, there's some strong fillings in regard to the five-story, maybe the applicant may want to withdraw their application rather than going through this exercise if they have a feel for the outcome of a five-story application. I don't know if this is going to be something of a futile exercise if we already perceive the outcome.
Thank you. Thank Counsel Iannone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the point that we may very well not be having a five-story before us, and the residents are here to object to a five-story, they're going to be pretty happy when it's not a five-story, and we don't know whether he's going back to his original application or reduced height anyway. So rather than have people sit here for a full exercise that's going to come back to us again, maybe we can ask the developer right off, are you deferring this? If so, I'd make the motion.
Now, okay, the pleasure of council. We have a motion on the floor to consult with the developer before the hearing, seconded by Counsel DiDatti. Any discussion on the motion? Having seen none, all those in favor? Fine. We'd like to ask the proponent to come forward, or his representative, please.
For the record, please, identify yourselves and...
Good evening, Worship. Rocky Vacca appear on behalf of Wedgewood Homes.
I'm Rick Brady, also appear on behalf of Wedgewood Homes.
Is there a matter that we should be aware of, Mr. Vacca?
We prepared a compromised position of four stories, 43 units. That drawing was shown to the abutting area neighbors about a week ago. It went to planning staff last Wednesday.
Yeah, okay.
It went to somebody.
Mr. Culinary spoke to a couple of the neighbors and showed a couple of the immediate adjacent neighbors the four-story building. That's what we're, we understand. That has now been brought to planning staff. It was provided here Wednesday of last week, and that is the proposal that we thought would address the issues that were raised by planning staff before, particularly the issue of height, because it was to seem to be the main issue that was in the report. And so this evening, particularly since there's been this suggestion by the alderman present, what we would like to do is, obviously, there's a public meeting, this plan, and it needs to go ahead. There's no doubt of that. But we would like deferral on any consideration of the apartment building until planning staff have the opportunity to both consider the comments that are raised tonight by the public and also this revision that we put forth as part of a four-story and slightly smaller number of units, if that's acceptable.
So you're requesting a deferral of this matter?
Not the public meeting, sir.
Okay. Well, okay. Counsel Carrio?
Your Worship, they come back with a four-story application, isn't that a totally new project? That would need time?
The original application that was submitted was a seven-story, and as a result of discussions, it was revised to the five-story, which is before council today. When the report came out from planning staff that suggested, and the report that each of you had, suggested that the density on the site as proposed was acceptable, that there were a number of positive aspects about the locational characteristics of the site, but it was clear that the height of the building was still a concern of the planning staff. So we immediately addressed it at that point to revise it to the four-story.
Well, Counsel Iannone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Brady's talking about a reversal that we have no information on, and I'm confused on a deferral on the matter that's before us, but we'll have a public meeting on a matter that we have no information on. So I don't think we can do both, Mr. Brady, and maybe through you, Mr. Chair, the clerk. Does that procedure even make sense? If we're deferring this matter, do we not defer the matter to the new application that comes before us?
Well, trying to think of a good answer here. I mean, you can do whatever you wish, in the sense if you want to hear from the public right now, you could hear them, and then defer the matter later. I mean, I guess, I guess the desire is probably that to hear the same information twice, and also will the comments from the public be relevant if we're dealing with a different proposal? It seems to me, and I want to put words in Mr. Vacca or Mr. Brady's mouth, but it seems what they're saying is, other than, you know, their revised application is reduced in height, but the other, I guess, characteristic, characteristics may be very similar to this application, and therefore they probably want to hear from the public input as well through this process. I mean, in the past, you've deferred other public meetings where there's been a full chamber full of people as well, and, you know, although the people tend to get a little disgruntled, I think they understand that often it's for the best because the developer's going back to the drawing board, and usually there's also then more kind of neighborhood public meetings that may happen to resolve the issues. So I think there is other options for the developers to get feedback from the residents, but it's really up to you tonight how you want to proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm going to make a motion to defer the entire application. The residents can't speak against, speak about something they have no report and no information on, and quite frankly, the rumbling in the audience where the developer says, "I spoke to the neighbors," and the shaking of the heads, "No, they did not." I would say on a developer's point of view, I would rather go, I'd rather get my teeth crossed and my eyes dotted before you bring back something that is clearly not going to pass through this council, so I move defer.
Okay. Motion to defer by Counsel Iannone, seconded by Counsel Wing. Okay, it's non-debatable?
What are we doing on this one? We have an application?
Well, well, we've got, Mr. Brady just a point...
Make the motion.
Yeah, there's a motion on the table on the floor.
Can I clarify my motion?
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, my motion is because they're talking about a four-story amended application, and we're talking about a five-story development in front of us. Either we're talking about the same thing, or they're on something we haven't even seen. Hence, my motion for defer.
Sure. We have a motion on the floor, okay? I'm going to call the vote. It's non-debatable. Is there something else Counsel talking?
Yeah, I think that's unfair to cut everybody off, and I don't want to give anybody the impression that they can go back and come in with a four-story development that is going to be, going to be acceptable. I think there are all kinds of things that can be done. I don't like the sighting of the building up against the residential area. You've got the Queen's Hotel on the other side, which would, it could be moved over, and there could be some compromise. But I think the first thing I should do is go back to the residents and have some input and see if there's something acceptable, whether they can come back to council.
Well, the deferral may allow them to do that, so, members of council, are you speaking to the issue?
Worship, I'm just wondering about the deferral. We can still give residents a chance to speak if they wish. I mean...
Is that your pleasure?
I think that that's what we owe them. I mean, they came all the way down here. My only issue is, I mean, I just don't want residents getting up, speaking to an application as of a five-story unit when the applicant isn't even proposing to put in a...
I don't think it's fair to council or to the residents. I agree, and I think that's the point, so we do have a motion before us. Counsel Wing, I'll let you make the comment, please.
I was contacted on the weekend by a representative of the developer who said, "We don't want a five-story building. What we want is a four." And I said, "Well, you know, we don't have any information on the four in front of us. What we have in front of us is something on a five." So I would recommend to you that you defer the application, go back to square one, hold the public meetings with the people in the neighborhood, work with them to find something that will fit. And why we have the representatives of the developer here before us tonight wanting to do something different is totally beyond me. If we're not going to be looking at a five-story, 49-unit building, then there's no use even having a public meeting on it. Everybody can come back and deal with whatever it is they're eventually going to bring into us instead.
Okay, we have a motion to defer. We've had sufficient comment. We'll call the vote. All those in favor? Carrio and Asprey, thank you very much. The matter is deferred, thank you. Pleasure of council. And to the residents, we'll have you come back again once this matter comes before us, and you'll be notified. Thank you very much for your attendance.
Just to that note, perhaps if the developer is going to have meetings with the residents, I don't think any of us would be opposed to perhaps attending that so that we get the whole picture. So maybe to the developer, Rick and Rocky, any of us, if you issued an invitation to us, any of us would be happy to come out, listen to the residents' concerns, and whatever coordinated response you guys are going to come back with.
Counsel Iannone, we have had neighborhood meetings before downstairs, and some of us did attend, so, okay? Thank you. Thank you very much. (noise) Members of council, the next item in the agenda is PD 2007-14, the status report on downtown. I'd like to ask our Director of Planning, Mr. Doug Darvison, to make the presentation, please. (noise) Okay. Okay, Mr. Darvison? Is there some way to... Doors closed, please, or just... More people coming in, yeah. Okay, Mr. Darvison?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, on this evening's agenda, we have a, quite a significant report on the downtown revitalization project. This status report is intending to bring council fully up to speed with respect to all of the studies that have been commissioned by the council. There's a series of recommendations that have been considered tonight, and there's a number of people wishing to make presentations and to provide council with information. The order of the meeting as we have set it up would be first, there's a small film clip prepared by the Center for Advanced Visualization. Mr. Dave Carson and Bob Morell from Niagara College are here. They are the authors of this visualization project and was commissioned as part of the, one of the major studies of the downtown, and that is the Eastern Gateway Environmental Assessment. So we do have a small film clip that shows downtown as it exists today and what the downtown could look like through the efforts of the Community Improvement Plan and the SIP document. So the first order of business would just have that brief film clip. Secondly, we have the study, the market feasibility study that has been prepared and commissioned by council. We have Mr. Henry Joseph of Joseph Urban Consultants here with us this evening to make a presentation, and Peter Norman of Altus Clayton as well to make a presentation. And from the BIA, we have Fran Ho-Ho that has been retained by the BIA. She's, she works for the consulting firm of PKF, Major Marketing and Tourism Consultant, also wishing to make a presentation. Following all of that, we have a list of deputants that wish to also speak to council. So I will turn over the side of the meeting to the clerk for the showing of the film clip, and then we'll bring on the consultants for their presentation.
Thank you. Chief, yeah?
Please, camera, ask.
There you go. There you go.
The Niagara Falls downtown area is an important hub to the community despite continued deterioration with empty and boarded-up retail spaces. However, there are successful businesses continuing here, including banks, lawyers, and doctors. In the center is City Hall and the Acres Building, the newest in the area. It is also the transportation center with via rail and bus transfer stations, giving visitors their first impression of the city. The goal and challenge is to stop and reverse the trend of decay and loss of business. The deterioration of downtowns is common across North America, but there have also been cases of successful revitalization and a return to vibrant retail and social activity. There is a plan for the Niagara Falls downtown. The Strategic Implementation Plan originally encompassed the whole downtown. This has been followed by the market feasibility study, recommending a focus on the eastern section of Queen Street. Presented here is Phase One of the Road to Recovery. Dramatic changes to the Eastern Gateway are crucial to the success of the area. At present, there is little to promote the... a number of people wishing to make presentations and to provide council with information. The order of the meeting as we have set it up would be first, there's a small film clip prepared by the Centre for Advanced Visualization. Mr. Dave Carson and Bob Burrell from Niagara College are here. They are the authors of this visualization project and was commissioned as part of one of the major studies of the downtown, and that is the Eastern Gateway Environmental Assessment. So, we do have a small film clip that shows downtown as it exists today and what the downtown could look like through the efforts of the Community Improvement Plan and the SIP document. So, the first order of business would just have that brief film clip. Secondly, we have the study, the market feasibility study that has been prepared and commissioned by council. We have Mr. Henry Joseph of Joseph Urban Consultants here with us this evening to make a presentation, and Peter Norman of Altus Clayton as well to make a presentation. And from the BIA, we have Fran Ho-Ho that has been retained by the BIA. She works for the consulting firm of PKF, Major Marketing and Tourism Consultant, also wishing to make a presentation. Following all of that, we have a list of deputants that wish to also speak to council. So, I will turn over the side of the meeting to the clerk for the showing of the film clip, and then we'll bring on the consultants for their presentation.
Thank you. Chair, please.
The camera is...
There you go.
The Niagara Falls downtown area is an important hub to the community despite continued deterioration with empty and boarded-up retail spaces. However, there are successful businesses continuing here, including banks, lawyers, and doctors. In the center is City Hall and the Acres Building, the newest in the area. It is also the transportation center with via rail and bus transfer stations, giving visitors their first impression of the city. The goal and challenge is to stop and reverse the trend of decay and loss of business. The deterioration of downtowns is common across North America, but there have also been cases of successful revitalization and a return to vibrant retail and social activity. There is a plan for the Niagara Falls downtown. The Strategic Implementation Plan originally encompassed the whole downtown. This has been followed by the market feasibility study, recommending a focus on the eastern section of Queen Street. Presented here is Phase One of the Road to Recovery. Dramatic changes to the Eastern Gateway are crucial to the success of the area. At present, there is little to promote the downtown area to passing traffic on River Road. The development of a dynamic entrance at the Eastern Gateway will encourage vehicles to visit Queen Street before continuing on their journey along the Parkway. More than 18,000 vehicles travel this route on a peak day during summer. Two options are being considered. The first is for River Road southbound to be diverted onto Queen Street with a turning lane on Zimmerman Avenue to connect back on to River Road. River Road traffic heading north will be diverted onto Zimmerman to Queen Street, where an opportunity is presented to the traveler to turn right and continue along the river or turn left to the downtown. The second option is to create a traffic circle at the foot of Queen Street. Combined with other development in this area, it would encourage drivers to turn and explore the downtown. Final recommendation of this area development will be based on further environmental assessments. There are two proposed developments at this eastern entrance. A 25-story condominium with street-level cafes and retail, as well as a hotel apartment complex, all overlooking the Niagara Gorge. A new civic square is proposed at Queen Street and Erie Avenue, which is currently a city park. This attractive meeting place would be a large venue suitable for public events and festivals. This civic square would be a focal point for downtown and would have a distinctive clock tower at the corner. An alternative, as recommended by the Community Improvement Plan, is to remove the old courthouse and expand the existing Centennial Square. This would create a more useful venue and create a stronger visual setting for City Hall. This parking lot on Erie Avenue would then be developed for retail commercial. The vision for the downtown includes revitalizing landmark buildings, returning to vibrant commercial retail. Depicted is the Rosberg Building, being renewed to its former glory with new high-end tenants. Guidelines have been drafted for improved streetscaping and building facade renewal. The impact of these improvements are visualized here, showing the positive effect. It's important to implement financial incentive programs that would provide funds for facade upgrades, new residential developments, and commercial building improvements. These improvements to streetscaping include historical street lamps, banners, hanging baskets, trees, and street furnishings. All such improvements will add to the attractiveness of the downtown area, creating a true people place. When reversing the damages of neglect, it will be important to adapt a new detailed signage standard for storefronts and windows. Restoring buildings to the materials and look of their origins will create a true, authentic, historical downtown, providing desired shopping experiences for today's lifestyle. Large portions of land are consumed by surface parking areas. It is proposed to erect a multi-story parking structure along Erie Avenue. This facility will have retail commercial at street level, designed to fit the historical look for the area. This will open land of current parking lots for more dynamic future development. To reclaim the economic vitality of the downtown area of Niagara Falls, it will depend on the city's partnerships with the BIA and the private development sector. It is important for the city to provide leadership, combined with other levels of government financial support. The completion of key projects, such as the Eastern Gateway, streetscaping, and parking structure, will be a positive first step. It will also be a catalyst to fulfill the entire SIP as originally envisioned, creating a revitalized and successful downtown.
Good evening. My name is Henry Joseph, and this is my colleague, Peter Norman. We've been working for the last six months on our analysis and report and hope that it'll be helpful in terms of this ongoing process for the downtown. First of all, I'd like to apologize for turning my back on you. I didn't realize that this is how the speaker system is set up, so you'll have to bear with me.
Don't worry, just take the...
Thank you.
First of all, the first thing that we've concluded is we're dealing with quite a significant market here, as you know. Within the city of Niagara Falls itself, we have over 80,000 people, which represents a very strong resident consumer market. We have Niagara on the lake to the south, or to the north, which is approximately 14,000 people, much smaller and quite different in terms of character. And we have Fort Erie to the south with 30,000 people. Once again, a large component in the marketplace. Basically, if we look at the latest census information, it's quite good news in terms of the Niagara region itself.
Mr. Joseph, could you please address this, Mr. Joseph, into the speakers so we could hear you, you're having trouble picking up on the TV.
Certainly. On Niagara Falls itself, we're looking at slightly less than 1% average growth per annum over the last five years. Niagara on the lake, 1.1%, Fort Erie, 1.2%. So, all of these factors are positive in terms of the market itself. The big plus in terms of the Niagara region is approximately 14 million people per year, a staggering number of people. The most difficult part of it is the average overnight stays are limited to about 27%. So, the visitors are here, but they're here and they're gone. This is the kind of thing that retailers have to deal with in terms of how they set up their businesses. Historically, the major retail centers in Niagara Falls itself have emerged along the QEW corridor. There are many reasons for this. One is the accessibility, the availability of larger sites. So, we have a history of the various centers that have evolved to date, several of them with major department store anchors, and really now going through a second stage of rejuvenation themselves. We're seeing Niagara Square, which ran into difficulties over the last five years with a new landlord, buildings being knocked down, being replaced by other retail units that are more contemporary. We see the former city lands to the north of that with the developer with potential tenants for it, ready to go. So, the downtown has to be participating in this rejuvenization, revitalization process. It's just more difficult from a downtown context. The retailers themselves are spoiled, they're used to calling the shots, they deal through leasing people that represent 40 or perhaps 50 in some cases, various clients. The whole industry has more or less rationalized itself, and it's a lot more difficult from a landlord's perspective to bring in the kind of retailers he wants to have. Once again, the industry's really consolidated where we have very, where we had the old traditional developers, we now have large pension funds, looking for bigger projects, looking for long-term investments, a very different kind of scenario than we had even 10 years ago. The downtown itself, I don't have to say very much about it. I think the pictures speak for themselves. It's had a very difficult time. It's gone through, in a period when the market has continued to grow and the tourist population has increased, everything seems to have passed it by. The peripheral centers have grown, the new retailers have come to the community, and the downtown has gone in the opposite direction. The vacancy rate now is about 60%. At the same time, it's not unusual to see a downtown of this size requiring a downscaling in terms of the actual physical space. The share that would normally go to the downtowns has shrunk over the last two decades, where when the studies were done in the 70s, we would find very high, or very solid market shares for the downtowns. Over time, they became smaller and smaller. Where we had done inventories and found most of the national tenants downtown, what we're finding instead is office services, real estate offices. Basically, the community services have moved into the main street and replaced a lot of the retail. So, one of the things we've had to deal with here is the whole scale, the length of Queen Street, and whether it's still appropriate in terms of full comprehensive retail development, and we don't think it is. We've benchmarked a lot of, well, first of all, we've benchmarked Oakville and Burlington. People will say, "Well, Oakville and Burlington probably have higher income per capita." But when you take an in-depth look at their downtowns, what you'll find is these are regional retailers and local retailers. They're not national retailers. They're people that are catering to the solid component of that local market. If I live in a $10 million estate in Oakville, I won't be shopping in Oakville. I'll be either on Bluer Street or in New York. And this is the kind of thing that they've experienced over the last 10 years. But these downtowns have survived. They've managed to fight off the Big Buck expansion, and they've done a very good job of it. If I were to probably walk down the main street in Niagara Falls, I could probably buy a downtown property for less than $200,000. If I walked down the main street in Oakville, I would be paying about $900,000 for basically the same building with the suitable improvements in it and the right tenant. So, we're dealing with a huge difference in terms of the economics involved. The critical mass that we felt was around 200,000 square feet in terms of the first phase and up to about 430,000 square feet. And you say, "Well, what does that really mean?" What it means is probably a total development of approximately 50% of the area developed in the SIP. And even that scale of development would require about a 10% share of the whole market, which is a pretty tough benchmark in terms of contemporary downtowns. The lifestyle concept, which is a buzzword in the industry these days, is going bananas in the United States, but it's not going bananas in Canada. There are a number of reasons for it. The seasonality, the reluctance of national tenants to go back downtown, a lot of very good reasons. We've interviewed a number of people involved with contemporary leasing in the Ontario market, and they're very skeptical about being able to do a lifestyle concept in Niagara Falls. So, what we're saying is back to basics. Oakville isn't a lifestyle. It has a lot of the ingredients of it, but once again, if you look at the retailers themselves, they're pretty solid, down-to-earth kind of retailers. So, we think just taking the basic approach will still do the job for you. The other thing that I think is particularly exciting about the downtown right now, and you might have to think ahead a decade, but at some point in time, that via rail station and its linkage to the rest of the Golden Horseshoe is going to be very, very important. When Peter and I try to get out of Toronto and come to Niagara Falls, probably 60% of our time is spent going the first 20% of the trip, just trying to get out of the city. Toronto just doesn't work anymore. And I can see how the Niagara region is going to have its own face, but is also going to be very important in terms of the linkage with the rest of the Golden Horseshoe. So, people are going to be coming this way, and they're going to be going the other way. So, when you think about it, areas like St. Conference don't have their railway stations even close to the downtown. This is really a unique kind of thing, where you've got a major catalyst already located in literally walking distance of your main corners. The other thing is the people mover. We'd like to see more glue between the Niagara Parks Commission and the downtown, but you have to offer them something at the same time. It's one thing to say, "Well, bring the bus through the downtown." It's another thing to say, "If you do this and we see some positive benefits for you, perhaps it's worth contributing some dollars towards the whole process." So, that's another important thing. And then the other part of it is, if you're not going to have retail everywhere, what do you do with the area that doesn't have that kind of a retail future? And what we see with that is what's really taking place in many of these communities is the emergence of medium-density housing, coming in with two, possibly three stories of residential, in many cases still having a commercial face on it, but much smaller shops, not the full 3,000-square-foot shop, perhaps 500 square feet at ground level with a retail face to it. So, that's what we'd like to see with the area that isn't included in the emphasis. Okay, Peter, have we got the one with the floor springs on it? The downtown west, we just don't see a highly specialized kind of retail future for it. When I look at it, what I see is sort of the remnants of a highway commercial area, you know, almost down to the old Canadian Tire Store and the muffler shops and the, those kinds of things. We think those can be upgraded to the LCBO, some kind of a specialty food store, those kinds of things happening, but certainly not the fashion and the other kinds of things that we would see in the east end of the downtown. Sir, no.
Excuse me. Can we just have the presentation first, please? We'd just like to let them proceed, then there'll be time for questions later. Thank you.
This is my last point, anyway. Property owners and the tenants, they're the ones that are ultimately going to make this happen. The infrastructure is something the municipality can do, the streetscape is something the municipality can help with, but really, the development has to be that the experience of someone that's done a lot of retail development, moving in and saying, "Okay, I know exactly what I'm doing. I've done this before. I've got the confidence of all these retail people, and I can make it happen." So, I think it's not something that the city is going to accomplish on their own. The city can be a facilitator for this process, but that's all as far as I can see. This is quite different from a project like Niagara Square, where they've got their own property, they've got, everything is within their control. In this case, the city sets the general environment, but it's up to the property owners to do the rest. This is just to give you, there's a lot of numbers there, but the concept of the original SIP was to have three different kinds of retail concept areas: national tenants, destination tenants, which would be more the regional Niagara kinds of tenants, and the neighborhood people, and it added up to about 800,000 feet. We think that's really pushing the envelope in terms of achieving more development. It would be 80% the size of the Yorkdale Shopping Center, for example, without any of the, taking into account... of the, taking into account any of the department store tenants. So 800,000 feet of specialty tenants is a huge, huge amount. What we suggested is, if we look at it in terms of potential phasing, as we said, is to get a first phase going with the east area, and if that's successful in its own right, then obviously, there are going to be spin-off effects for the adjacent lands and for other parts of the downtown itself, and then things like parking structures will come along. The SIP looks at two parking structures. Well, from our perspective, it only makes sense to build, right now, the parking utilization is something like 30 percent. So it doesn't make sense to look at two parking structures right now. You build the first one when it's running at 85 to 90 percent utilization, and you've got other components to bring into the equation, then you look at the second phase of development. So Peter's going to talk to you about what these numbers really mean, what the emphasis on the first phase, because if you're not successful in the first phase, you're not even going to get to the second phase.
Thanks very much. Thanks, Henry. Thank you, Your Honor. My name is Peter Norman, and I'm an economist who's been asked to work on this project. And I've been working alongside Henry in terms of the market work that he's presented here and the conclusions that he's brought forward. I've been asked to look at the idea of what's the impact on the city, the fiscal impact on the city, first of all, in terms of what is being asked to contribute in terms of money upfront, in terms of infrastructure, in terms of capital and other issues, and also in terms of the broader economic impact that this plan, this modified plan, will have for the city, city and beyond. And so for the next couple of minutes, I'm just going to present a little bit of that material to you by way of these slides, and then hopefully, we can talk a little bit more, perhaps, about some of the positive benefits of this scaled-down plan. So first of all, what, we've developed a model here about the costs and benefits. And the first part of it is the fiscal piece. So we're looking at the hard municipal cost, the municipal funding which is required for certain items in order to bring about that first phase, the first initial bit that Henry Joseph was describing, a critical mass of retail that will start the transformation. Talked about the costs upfront that will be required along that, in order to bring that forward. And then we've looked at the revenues that would come to the city if the plan continued to develop out from that point. Now, the revenue side, we've looked at sort of three different scenarios. So far, everything that's been presented is in a sort of a single scenario framework. So I don't want to be too focused on these scenarios. These scenarios are really just in order to address the what-if things don't develop exactly as planned. And we're not doing a scenario on the market side, the work that Henry Joseph put forward. We're not doing a scenario on that. But part of what makes this plan work in the end, and I think my numbers will bring that forward to the group, part of what makes it work in the end, of course, is the newly-built residential. And so we brought forward scenarios around that assumption, just in order to address the idea of what if the residential doesn't actually come with it. So when I talk about the scenarios, it's really about the residential development that comes along with the plan. And then just from a technical standpoint, really what we're doing here is a 20-year cash flow projection, what you have to spend over the next 20 years, and what sorts of revenues come back. All the numbers that we present are what's called net present value, so they're sort of in today's dollars. Today's dollars equivalent of everything you need to spend and of everything you will accrue and earn over the next 20 years. That's what these dollars mean that we'll be talking about. First off, on the cost side, we've assessed this scaled-down plan as requiring input from the city of about, a little over $30 million in net present value terms, in terms of all of the types of costs around a variety of requirements to the plan. First of all, there's some land swaps and land acquisition that requires a couple of million dollars in net input from the city. There is infrastructure requirements, those are the streetscape improvements and those, the realignment of River Road, et cetera, that you saw in the visualization at the beginning of this session. Those, there's some additional roadwork, including bringing Huron Street back online. I don't think we saw that in the visualization, but a number of street improvements, basically about $8 million worth of street improvements in total through that. We are talking about a city-owned parking structure. It's a, as Henry mentioned, a single structure at this point for this phase, and it's a slightly smaller structure than what was put forward in the original SIP, but still, it's about a $12 million investment in that. And there's some additional parking improvements embedded into that $12 million as well in terms of the surface lots. Operating costs of that structure, of the parking system, and additional operating costs of the infrastructure over the 20-year period in net present value terms of $1 million. This is sort of incremental to what it would be if nothing happened going forward. And then there are a number of city financed, economic incentive programs which are in place at present and which would be leveraged fairly highly, at least in terms of the assumption here, in order to bring about primarily those facade improvements that, again, that were presented to you in that visualization. A number of city programs that would require city patch or indoor lost tax revenue, depending on the structure of those programs, again, amounting to about $3.5 million. In total, we consider that a little over $30 million of investment. That's the type of number to be considering on the cost side of what we're putting forward here.
Excuse me. Yes, Counselor Peter Ansel.
Thanks, Your Worship. Just had a question about the first cost that's up there, the land acquisition. Just wondering if you can elaborate, actually, which land you're proposing that the city, is it purchased, is it appropriated? I'm not too sure. But if you could give us some detail, that'd be great.
This, what we've embedded into the analysis here, we haven't made, we haven't done any of our own assumptions on the land piece. We've taken staff recommendations for both land acquisition and disposition, so this is the net value in terms of the capital value, of a number of land plots in the downtown, some of which would be disposed to developers and some of which would be acquired from existing landowners through, it could well be through a corporation or it could be through market acquisition. And we're also embedding into this cost the soft costs around that acquisition and disposition as well. And so we're taking those costs from staff estimates.
Thank you.
We've looked at a number of revenues that will accrue to the municipality from the fruition of the first phase, this scaled-down SIP, about a successful fruition of this first phase, in terms of what would come back to the city after this investment. We believe, the first item, it's not the largest item on the list, it's a little, just slightly under $4 million, is what we're calling incremental tax revenue from residential assessment. This is residential, this is incremental tax revenue over and above what the city is currently getting in sort of current dollar terms, relative to what the city might be getting if property values for residential property owners in the general vicinity of the downtown improve incrementally to the rest of the city as a result of being close to a more vibrant retail and community center. And the assumptions that we've made behind the types of impacts on property values from being close to a vibrant community center, such as the one which is proposed in the SIP, relative to being centered around a fairly rundown, decaying downtown, of which some of the property values might presently be reflecting, are being built into this, and then additional tax revenues from that increment are being assessed. And we feel that it would amount to about $4 million, again, in net present value sense over the course of a 20-year study period. Similarly, on the commercial side, much more so. Henry mentioned the types of differentials right now, the types of property values in the downtown of the retail units, relative to other centers which have already undergone a revitalization. And we're assuming that, not that the value would become $900,000 as they are in Burlington and Oakville, but that there would be a reasonable lift in those property values of the existing retail units that get revitalized, and this, and those incremental revenues are, would be a little under $8 million in total over the, in net present value terms and over the course of the thing. There's also, I think, new tax revenue that comes from residential in the kind of the standard scenario, the standard scenario, which is about, I think it's about 600 or 700 new apartment, high-density apartment units, those are those ones which are on by the eastern gateway that were visualized in the tower in the presentation earlier. That brings a little under $9 million in revenue. Now, that's a scaled-down version to what was in the original SIP. So if there were additional high-density demand, perhaps as much as 1,000 units built over the course of the study period, it might be as much as about a little over $13 million from new tax revenue. But of course, alternatively, if there's, if there really doesn't materialize any, you know, much high-density demand at all, maybe some of the medium-density stuff that Henry was talking about, maybe more like $2 or $3 million in. So we've tested that, those scenarios in terms of that one assumption, the residential. A little bit from development charges revenue that comes here, the development charge waivers showed up in terms of the cost, because that's an economic incentive. And we've looked at parking system revenues, which is quite a substantial amount, that would be offsetting, directly offsetting some of the capital going into the actual parking pieces, but overall, about $13 million in incremental parking system revenues. This is both on and off-street. Total, about, a little over $35 million in revenue. It could be as low as $29, or perhaps as high as $40, depending on what happens on the residential side. The cost piece that we showed earlier, of course, was about $31 million. So what we're talking about is perhaps a loss of about $1 million, so really a wash, you might say, in terms of the precision that we're talking here, or a gain of something between about, you know, about $5 to $9 million in net present value. Those, that's the fiscal assessment that we've looked at in terms of making this plan come to fruition. The other, the last piece I want to bring forward to you is just the economic benefit that would come about, again, from this plan coming forward into fruition. These are benefits that would all sort of accrue to the community in general, but aren't, at least over and above what we've just discussed, aren't actually hitting the bottom line of the municipality. The first thing is a little under 700 new jobs downtown, a fairly vibrant work environment, where the downtown would become much more of a place of work. I see a lot of additional jobs downtown. The construction involved in some of the new space, which, new retail space, the new residential space, and also all of the refurbishments, and also all of the infrastructure work, all of that construction put together is about 1,600 person years of employment. A lot of that would be for local, a lot of that would be accrued within the local community, but it would be, it could be a little bit further afield. And again, because that's involved in residential construction, it could be as low as about 760 person years of employment, or about 2,200, depending on what ultimately comes about in terms of those residential scenarios. There's about $12 million in tax revenue from this plan accrued to higher levels of government. This would be primarily sales tax and other taxes that come through the system when you create that many jobs in this area and create that much economic benefit. A lot of tax revenue to the senior levels of government that comes from this plan. And, you know, there is, in addition, the idea that a revitalized downtown would assist in terms of the tourism draw, would try to bolster the Niagara Falls premier position in terms of drawing tourists within the Ontario marketplace, and particularly the type of dynamics that Henry was putting forward in terms of the people mover and the transportation stations and other components of this plan that might make it very attractive in terms of, in terms of the tourism piece. So the plan isn't just based necessarily on pulling, you know, a component of the existing tourism market, but also boosting, bolstering the tourism sector for the city as a whole. I think it's also worth saying that with the job improvements that come about for local residents and the new jobs downtown, et cetera, et cetera, we're talking a little over $100 million in additional income in people's pockets, additional income from labor and wages and other sources of income. And again, a lot of that would be for people living within the city. And that, Your Honor, brings me to the end of the formal points I wanted to make about what we assess both on the fiscal side in terms of the economic benefits.
Thank you. Perhaps there's some questions from members of council that we could pose to Mr. Joseph and Mr. Norman. Members of council, any questions at this point? Counselor Thompson?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Joseph, I was starting to enjoy some of the comments that you were making with respect to the shrinking of the development to the eastern gateway, indicating that most of the emphasis had to come from the property owners downtown. And also, you talked about bringing the roadway up into the downtown area for the Parks Commission. Is there, has there any progress made with respect to the Parks Commission in these discussions?
Perhaps, Mr. Darvison, could you answer that question, or a CIO?
Mr. Joseph's work is building upon the EA study for the eastern gateway. There have been discussions between the Parks Commission and the EA consultant. That work is not finished. There certainly have been objections to one of the concepts by the Parks Commission. The roundabout seems to be a more warming type of concept. But that EA study, Counselor Thompson, is not completed. Therefore, the information being assessed this evening is only based on the current status of that study, and there will be continuing dialogue, because the environmental assessment process requires full public consultation and consultation.
Well, I think, also, what about the railway access in the area? Is there any, through the chair, is there any progress on that? I see in the plan, it was going to be a linear park, but my discussions with them at the railroad indicate that that's the only access to the bridge. Has there been any discussions on that? Mr. Darvison?
I might have to defer that one to maybe Mr. Dulik. There is a special study specifically aimed at that bridge, and I'm finding that we're not specifically involved with that, so I don't have the answer to that question.
Mr. Dulik, can you answer that question at all, or do you?
Yes, through your worship. I know there is a consultant that's being retained to look at options on what that bridge structure can be used for, but we have not seen any details yet on it as to what potential uses are for that old rail bridge and the connecting link to it.
Well, the access is there. If you take the access away, then the bridge becomes useless, and it's probably one of the best assets we certainly have. In fact, I had discussions last week from people in Niagara Falls, New York, about some plans that they have, and it is, without exception, truly important to some of the plans that they have. Again, through the chair, is there anyone that can comment about the Christ Church? I had an email from them expressing grave concern about interfering with their parking and their facility and what they want to remain the status quo. Is there anyone who can comment?
Mr. Dulik, can you, I'm sorry, Mr. Darvison, could you answer that?
On that point, Mr. Mayor, the environmental assessment for the eastern gateway, I believe, has always acknowledged Christ Church as being an entity that would remain as part of that concept. There's no, there was never any indication that the church would be part of the acquisition program. The church was there on that particular corner in the EA. Is my understanding that that church is a facility that would stay there?
And, well, they're very concerned, and they didn't feel that they had ample input into the last round of discussion, so that's another impediment that is going to have to be dealt with. And I see some of the owners of the property, and I guess Ms. Mulligan will be speaking later about those properties, so those are other problems that exist with respect to it. Now, looking at your figure, we were talking about $36 million previously. Now you have a scaled-down project just the one end, the eastern end, and you still come up with $31 million. What am I missing here?
Is there a question to whom?
Consultant?
Well, the 36 is not my estimate, so I'm not, I'm not really privy to what may have gone into that, to some of the earlier estimates to the piece. Really, what we're putting together here is a realistic cost picture in net present value, not just of current or today, you know, not just of the, of what needs to be put out for whatever is going on today and over the next year, but really in order to maintain this infrastructure over the course of 20 years, brought back to today's value. value. I'm not certain about the, the estimate that the counselor brings forward about, about what may have gone into that one, or what it represents, but I think that this represents a reasonable cost estimate for the, the plan which, which we're discussing would be supported by the market.
Well, I, I'm not, the key figure before was for the project was $36 million, so if that's not accurate today, then, and I see a lot of the information here is, is focusing on a totally different concept that was conceived initially, I guess, when Mr. Leckman or whoever was here previously, and I don't know whether he's going to be here tonight, we're hoping so. What, Mr. Joseph, is it? Yes. Through the chair. You indicated that the, the development should be driven by the, the people in the area, the business people. Do you want to comment on that?
No, I think I made my comment. I don't know what else I could tell you.
Okay. You also indicated that you didn't need the, the parking structure at this time, and yet the other gentleman indicated that that was a crucial aspect of it, $13 million.
I didn't say that.
What do you mean?
I didn't say that. I said that we wouldn't need the second parking structure at this time.
You still think there's a, you said that there were 30% of the parking spaces were occupied, and when there were 80%, I thought you said that would be a necessity for the parking rep.
Yeah, but what we're going to introduce is all this additional retail. In other words, the 30% is based on a 60% vacancy level, so hopefully, we're going to fill up the equivalent of, of what's currently available, and when you get to that point and your parking structure is running at 85 or 85% occupancy, then you would look at the next phase of retail expansion and consider the second parking structure. That's basically what I said.
I misunderstood you then, because I, I thought you said it wouldn't be necessary for a parking structure. That's all I needed at this point.
Counselor Iannone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The 31.6 million is less than $5 million from the 36 point, the 36 million that was passed by council, removed by this council, reaffirmed, removed by this council. Recently, $27 million was removed again by this council in the, in the corporate, in the capital budget, and it's before us again. Now, I would say that there's a huge misconception in the community that council took their entire financial commitment to the downtown out of the budget. And I would say to the people here in support of the downtown that I'm looking at an entirely different proposal. We just deferred an application that came before us because we knew the consultant was going to, or the developer was going to talk, stand up and talk about an entirely different premise. I read your executive summary, quite frankly, didn't highlight most of it, so I realized I probably just could have read the whole thing and, and spoke to you of it. But repeatedly, through your executive summary, you highlight the unachievability of the S.I.P. as it was passed at the time. Not only do you highlight the unachievability, I think you call into question in your own writing, perhaps the ability for us to successfully simply Phase One. And you do that in your own, in your own, I would say, language in your report. So I would say to council that we're not dealing with the S.I.P. that was approved before this council. And we didn't renegotiate or do a motion to reconsider our $12 million investment into the downtown. So I'm going to make the first motion of many that will hit this floor tonight, and my motion will be to reconfirm council's motion on January 8th, 2007. Ordered on the motion of Alderman Iannone, seconded by Alderman Wing, that council's commitment to the downtown revitalization be limited to a maximum of $12 million for necessary improvements to the existing infrastructure, following the short and long-term timelines indicated in the community improvement plan, and that the $5.6 million from the sale of the Montrose Road property that council has already identified for the, the use of revitalization be directed instead to the capital works budget, and that the community continue to pursue equal funding for the downtown revitalization from the superior levels of government. That was unanimously passed by this council, Mr. Mayor. I think it's a misconception in the public that we pulled that $12 million out, because we didn't vote on that. So I'd like to make that motion right now.
There's a second to that motion. Counselor Wing? Members of council, do you wish to speak to the motion? Counselor Carrion?
I think it was always our understanding with that $12 million, that we would go after funding from other levels of government, and that the $12 million might not be the only investment made in the downtown, but it would be our investment that was made in the downtown. I'm hoping that the other levels of government will come and match our investment in the downtown, and we could do a project that's worth $30 million, but the taxpayers of our municipality will only come up with $12 million.
That's precisely the point I was making along, Counselor, that we needed some figure to rely on, and we could go to the levels of government. We still have the Minister of Public Works, Mr. Kaplan, who's awaiting information on our report. We now have the report completed, and he's asked to keep, asked us to keep him apprised of the matter. So that's precisely the comment that I wanted to make, but, Counselor Maves?
Just a matter of interest, too. Just a short time ago, I think some of us received an email from Counselor Puttick from the region, saying possibly with some region dollars for, for the downtown development. I wonder if we could possibly pursue that as well?
Yeah, nothing committed from the region, it would be a request that we'd have to make to the region, Counselor Maves, and we could certainly do that.
I think we should make that request. He's, he's said that it's available, so I think we should pursue that.
Well, we've made that in the past three years, we've made the council, the regional council aware of what we're doing here in the city in terms of jobs and the economy and the impact it has here, but we can certainly let them know. But we do have a motion on the floor, we'll deal with that. And Counselor Diaddi?
I'd just want to say that I'm pleased to support this motion, your worship. I think we all feel the same, that downtown is vital for the city to be healthy, that we have to take care of it, brush the teeth you want to keep. And I also believe that if we treat it casual, it's going to become something of a casualty. I mean, it's starting to decay, it's getting in worse and worse shape, and I think it's really important that we put our efforts behind it, and I'll gladly support this motion.
Okay. Any other comments, members of council, speaking to the motion? If not, we'll call the vote. All who can favor the motion, please raise your hands. It's unanimous, thank you very much. Thank you. Counselor Iannone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a number of other motions that I'd like to put forward, but we do have a number of presenters.
We do.
And I'd like to take that information before I put those motions on the floor.
I hope you let that happen. So I'd like to say we have some other deputations, so if there's other questions, yes, Mr. McDonald?
Just, I guess I, this is a bit awkward, but, and I may have missed it because I was away a little bit, but I'm just confused on some of the numbers that are being presented, and I think it's important that council has a good picture of. But if you look at the staff report relative to economic impacts on page four, it's suggesting that, and I'm thinking of the revenue slide, that's the slide I had a little bit of a problem with, because I haven't seen those numbers before. And, but the revenue, the comment made by staff on page four suggests that the possible economic impact is from a loss of $1 million to a gain of 7.8. I've never seen this $35 million report, and again, I was away and maybe I missed it, but I also looked in the actual document, the report, and the reference that staff used came right out of this report on page, maybe it's executive summary here, anyway, it's taken right from this report.
Is there an additional copy available? We don't have one.
Not our, not our report, the planning report.
You look at your report then, and the executive summary on page B8, page B111. And again, maybe I missed it, I'm sorry, this is a bit awkward, but I just don't want council with two bits of information.
Sorry, what page are we talking about?
I'm looking at an executive summary, B, oh, B, seven.
Roman numeral seven?
Yes. Okay, and if you look at all told, the net benefits to the city.
Right.
And that references $1 million to a 7.8 million, and that references net present value, and I assume staff, that's where...
Sorry, a, a loss of $1 million to a gain of 7.8.
Correct. So the gain is a maximum 7.8, but I see a gain here of a maximum $40 million?
I, I, maybe this hasn't been, maybe the slide wasn't expressed properly. What we're trying to get across on this slide is that the costs are, are $32 million, and the benefits could be as much as $40 million, so the net of those two is a net of 7.8 million. It would be the 40.6 minus the, should be the 40.6.
Again, I said this is a bit uncomfortable, but the discussions I've been involved in, because this is a critical point and critical for the council, to understand if they invest X number of dollars, what might they expect on a return? On the meetings that I was in, and the staff report that I signed, said that we could lose as much as a million or make as much as 7.8, and now I'm seeing that we could make as much as $40 million significantly.
I, I, the 40 would be, would be the, would be the gross revenue from a, and the, so the 7.8 would be the net revenue, a return.
So, okay, so that's...
So you would subtract from that 40 the, the costs of the 32 million.
So, so this is not a net present value, net revenue?
This is a gross revenue.
This is a gross...
Yeah, this is a total gross revenue.
And I think that's different than what, what the staff report is saying. The staff report is referring to the net revenue.
That's right, but, so the, if we, maybe this slide could have had the, had that additional line to it, just subtracting the 32 in costs, but if, once the 32, assuming that the 32 were all costs from the municipality, there would be a net revenue of 7.8 million. I suppose if, if some of those costs were offset by senior level of government or any of those other sources, then obviously the net would be higher.
This is not a slide I've seen, it's confusing, so I just don't want council to think that this is a net revenue slide you're looking at, because it's not.
Fair enough. Counselor Carrion, just a moment.
A question, that was one of my other questions, your worship, on that slide, the revenue slide, the, the tax revenue, the, that's the city's portion, or that's the total tax portion?
That would be the municipality's portion.
So there would be the regional?
To the region would be about 42%, so I think we're 33% of every dollar, is that fair? Did you use that figure at all?
So that's not the total tax, or the...
We're looking at the, the municipalities' portion of the tax revenue. This, this balance sheet that we're putting forward here is just for the city of Niagara Falls. It's not looking at education taxes, the province is not looking at regions' taxes, to the region.
Okay.
Now, that would have to be a different analysis if the region wanted to undertake that analysis, and it wouldn't necessarily be based on the proportions, because when you're doing incremental tax revenue, it depends on the va, change in the value of the property relative to all the other values, properties in the jurisdiction, so of course, there'd be a larger jurisdiction that you would be doing that analysis over. But this is, this is the bottom line to the city of Niagara Falls, the corporation of the city of Niagara Falls. Okay. Counselor Iannone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm glad Mr. McDonald stood up and highlighted this portion of the report, because I have questions in regards to this also. A while back, I had asked for a copy of your draft report, and I had asked for a copy of correspondence from our staff to you as consultants. And I was very concerned in regards to the change to this exact paragraph that Mr. McDonald highlights tonight. In your draft report, April 24th, 2007, under your economic and fiscal impact assessment, your report to staff says, "All told, the net benefits to the city of this investment based on the Phase One developments are set out range from a loss of, in a, a loss of $5.8 million to a net gain of $3 million when expressed as a net present value over the 20-year time horizon. However, with the distribution of the bulk of the costs are sooner than the bulk of the revenue." You know what paragraph I'm talking about. You received correspondence from our staff dated May 22nd, and in the correspondence from our staff, our staff says to you, the fourth paragraph on page seven of the executive summary, that's the one I just read to you, notes that the financial analysis rests heavily on the assumption of the quantum of new residential development. And you reiterated that fact tonight, Mr. Joseph did, in the notes I took down, that it is highly dependent on residential redevelopment.
I didn't say that. Perhaps Peter did.
Then I'm confusing the two of you. The critical mass that this will make, the critical mass that will make this work is the newly-built residential. That's exactly what was said at that podium. I'm sorry if I've confused which one of you said it. And it says that there is no quant, I'm sorry, I'll start again. The fourth paragraph of page five of the executive summary notes that the financial analysis rests heavily on the assumption of the quantum of new residential development, but no comprehensive residential demand analysis has been undertaken. We are somewhat concerned as to how this statement might be interpreted by the federal and provincial governments. The proposed residential development scenarios used to determine the return on investment represent a realistic, a realistic projection based on the number of residential building permits that have occurred historically in the city. We would encourage a more positive spin, we stated, on the development scenarios that would minimize potential concerns by the various levels of governments." Now, I've told my staff before we got here, and made it very clear to my other members of council, that I feel very manipulative, that that's the direction that you got, because that direction that you received turned into the comments, the exact paragraph noted by staff, that highlights that all told net benefits to the city of this investment based on the Phase One developments are set out in range from a loss of $1 million as opposed to the 5.8, and to a net gain of 7.8 as opposed to the 3.0 million. Now, I guess my question to you would be, what facts and figures did you base? That's a large change, that, did you base that change on? Because they're facts and figures that this council hasn't seen, so I'm interested as to why that's such a great difference. I also have a problem with perhaps you being directed, and this is not your fault, but perhaps being directed to put a better spin on levels of provincial, federal, and this council and municipal government to invest money. In my mindset, it is what it is. I don't need it pretty, and I don't need a better spin. And, and quite frankly, Mr. Mayor, I think it's got to be alarming to Mr. Crater and Mr. Nicholson, because we're asking other levels of government to invest money, and I'm reading a comment from our staff that says, "Put a more positive spin on it." So what numbers did you use that this council isn't privy to, obviously, to get those better numbers?
Mr. Mayor?
Your Honor, I'll address this. I think most of the comments were, from the counselor, were towards my section of the report. One point, I mean, there are a number of points brought up, so I'll try, I'll try to address them to the, to the counselor's satisfaction, I would hope. The first point, I think, and this is one that, you know, I mean, as a consultant, you're open for, because it's part of the consulting process. And, you know, I've been before councils before with similar questions to the counselors, and I think from a counselor's perspective, it's a, it's a valid question to, to ask, you know, what's, why do you say one thing in draft report and one thing in a final? I've been before the Ontario Minister of Doors many times, and I've been asked that question before, why does your draft report say this? And the fact is, in, in pretty much every report I've ever written, there are, there are differences between the draft and the final report, and if there weren't differences, then the draft would be the final report. But part of the process that we go through in terms of putting together our analysis is, is an iterative type of process, and so we put forward a draft report that has our analysis in it. It's not, all the Ts aren't crossed, for an old analogy, not all of the Is are dotted. Some of the financial information is sort of ballpark, and sometimes there's, you know, it's bolded, saying we're checking this, et cetera, et cetera. That draft report gets vetted by the client in some cases, or in this case, seemingly regions of, of staff who read through it and say, "Well, look at this, there's a little thing in the parking revenues, you forgot about this lot, we have this lot thing, in this particular lot, we have, you know, revenues of this," and we forgot to mention it in there. And then other staff said, "Well, you forgot, you know, there's this kind of cost that we're going to have over here." So anyway, that's the process. I mean, when we go through a draft report, there are little costs, there are little benefits, perhaps that we miss. So we, we tighten that up. We have, as you can sort of see from the slide here, total, let's just talk about the total revenue, not the net. The net is a kind of a knife edge to, to look at, but total revenues, the total revenues here are about 35.5 million, and before, I mean, I, I don't have the benefit of having a draft report in front of me, because we usually get rid of it, but, you know, perhaps the counselor has it because she has it, but, but that those total revenues perhaps are a little bit higher or a little bit lower, I'm not sure. And the total costs also are a little bit higher or a little bit lower, I don't remember which one. And the net of those two were... And the net of those two were a tiny bit lower before. So out of total costs of, you know, the, the final cost, we came up with 31 million. I think that we went from a net benefit, I mean, I would need the draft report to know, but I think that we went on the median growth scenario of net benefits of about 1 million up to 3 million, so I think we moved by about 2 million on net. So two, so it's, so really, the change that we made should be evaluated as, as 2 million over 32 million. So we made a, we made a change of about, maybe about 5 percent in our, in our numbers, and I don't remember whether that was from the cost side or the benefit side. That's all I can say about the change from the draft to the final. The other, the other question that I'd like to, that-
Mr. Norman, just a point, are you prepared to stand by your numbers, then?
The, the numbers I'm prepared to stand by are, are the final numbers. I mean, they're the ones, if I changed them from the draft, it was because something was brought to my attention to, to make them fair. There was an awful lot of vetting that went on. The other que-
Okay. Final question.
Okay. There was no answer to my question there. I, I guess my question to you would be, final draft. I understand draft. Actually, I think I have all your drafts here, and I understand final draft. And it wasn't until I compared paragraph by paragraph, as I will, because I try to do my homework when I'm here, to realize that, that the paragraph that was changed so substantially are the numbers that would sway, i.e. us, the provincial and the federal government. There's far more than a $2 million span there, sir. So I'm asking you, what numbers were you given in the time span of April 24th to June 8th, that this council doesn't have, that would substantially change your numbers so greatly? Because that is not a minimal change. So you're asking us to buy into this report. And my comment to you was based on our, the direction of our staff to you. And the wording is, "Put a more positive spin on it." And that's what happened. So what facts, or what numbers did you use to put a more positive spin, so that us, and the province, and the feds would buy into a $31 million project? I, I think that's fair for me to ask that, because the numbers don't add up to me.
Okay. Counselor Wing, you have somebody to this point, is your question, but listen.
[inaudible]
Okay. Mr. Norman, can you answer that question?
The, I mean, I, Your Honor, I don't have the, the benefit of the, of the staff report in front of me and the draft and that, but my recollection from the process was that we received recommendations from staff. In fact, there were, there were several of them. I recall that there was some discussion about the residential, the feasibility of the residential numbers, and that's why we, we, we decided to address that with a range. I believe that I said in the, in, in my draft reports, that, you know, that we, that we, that the one, the one of the, one of the pieces that we were, you know, we asked to look at the retail market, we asked to look, but the residential piece, we sort of made, needed to make a call on, but there wasn't a comprehensive analysis for, that was in the draft report. And, and those comments continued to come through into the final report, but we were able to address that, I think, in a, in a more comprehensive fashion for council's benefit, by giving that range. So there hasn't been a comprehensive residential analysis. And, but, we think that the original number of units put forward in the SIP, which was , I believe, about 1,400 units, seemed a bit high, seemed quite high for Niagara Falls. We had, we had cut that in half for some of it, we'd taken some arbitrary assumption, and that was what the draft report was based on. Now, we've given a range, said, well, what if it's really, really bad? What if it's reasonably good? None, none of the residential scenarios are quite as strong as the original. So it gives a, a bit of a range on the residential analysis. I think potentially, this council could go forward with a more comprehensive residential analysis, see where it falls within that range. But I think one of the conclusions that we brought forward is that, in spite of the fact that tax revenue from the new residential is reasonably substantial, and I said that in my initial remarks, it's not, it's not the main and the principal or the majority benefit of this plan. It brings somewhere between 2 and 13 million dollars. It brings, you know, you call it an average of a little over 8 million dollars, out of total revenues of 35, or maybe 13 out of 40. But still, it's not the majority. I think that perhaps what staff were concerned about before, where we weren't addressing residential specifically in that number, was that what if, you know, what if there's a discomfort level around that number? What if, you know, maybe it would be better to have a range, and then to be able to address it that way, rather than there being potentially a, you know, a negative connotation from a, a potentially low number. This isn't a residential plan, so it would be a shame that it got, and I believe this was the intent of the staff comments, I, I may have misinterpreted them, it would be a shame if, if the analysis that went into the plan got a negative spin as a result of a residential issue, when it's really not a residential plan. The residential is, is something that I think in the original drafters of the SIP, and in, and I think in a, in a reasonable development scenario, as, as is being assessed here, residential is something that happens in revitalized downtowns. And I think that the range we've given, somewhere within that range, is, is a reasonable number. I don't, I would like to say, I would like to say for the record that, only because it seemed like it was, it seemed like this was one of the comments, that I don't feel like I changed my recommendation in terms of the spin, based on the word "spin" in staff comments. And I don't believe I've ever done that before. I do believe we've made minor adjustments to the data, and I believe that we refined it into numbers and, and a model and, and a, and a net value, which is very positive.
Thank you for calling upon that, those comments, Mr. Norman. All right, Wing, your counsel wing, sorry.
I'm just very surprised that the impact of the residential development is being downplayed now, and so we're, we're not the majority. The numbers that Counselor Iannone was referring to are from the executive summary, which is really a condensation of the entire report. And you see the change in the report itself from page 52 of the final draft, 6.7 fiscal scenarios, which appears a gain in its altered form on page 53 of the final report, gain under fiscal scenarios. And you see there that we go from gambling on a possible $5.8 million loss if there's a low residential development scenario, to a higher, possibly a 3-point million net gain if there's a higher residential scenario, to 1.1 million loss, which is considerably less than the 5.8 million loss, to possibility of a 7.8 million gain, instead of a mere 3-point, 3 million gain. But my concern is that now we're saying, well, you know, this doesn't really matter, it's, you know, certainly not the majority of the impacts, and yet, it says right here, both copies, it is important to note that the conclusions of this analysis rest heavily on the assumptions around the quantum of new residential development in the plan.
Can I make a comment here? I, I sat here and I listened to you talk to Peter about his mechanics. When we were going through this process, Peter made his best effort to arrive with an estimate of condominium absorption, high-rise absorption. There hasn't been any in this marketplace. Let me finish, please. Therefore, he had to come up with his estimate. At the same time, there is an application before council to do a high-rise building along the River Road, and Mr. Darvison gave me all that information. So we had 200, I believe, to 250 units that could be absorbed in the marketplace, as our example. So at that point in time, it seemed a lot more responsible to give you a range of possible values for the residential, and let you make up your own minds about the final implications of it, than to peg a number which we have no basis for determining in terms of historical absorption. There just hasn't been any, there's, there's no high-rise condominiums, to my knowledge, of this kind that have been built yet.
That's correct.
So as long as you understand that this is that kind of an analysis, that's the reason for the difference, in my mind, between the draft report and the final. Mr. Peter is an economist, he's not, the word "spin" doesn't mean anything to an economist. What mattered to them is numbers. If your staff chooses to use those words, that's your, that's for you to deal with, with your staff. I don't think it's fair to put on, on Peter.
No, no.
But the basic issue was-
We agree with you, and I thank you for your comments.
In the absence of the residential-
I did have the floor when you interrupted me. You actually helped me, because I was going to point out-
Counselor Wing, just let him make his comment, please, and just-
Okay, but I was in the middle of speaking, and I was in trouble.
Oh, I may, I may be a-
I was surprised you let him do that.
I'd like to let him respond to the question. Do you have anything else to say?
In the absence of that information, Peter's made what I think is a responsible approach. Let's put in the various possible things that could happen, and evaluate them, and you make the decision. It's your decision, ultimately.
Thank you, Mr. Joseph, that's fine, thank you very much.
Now I understand why the numbers are so tenuous, and that was going to be my very next point, is the readers should be reminded, there has been no comprehensive residential demand analysis undertaken to support the residential assumptions. This is all resting on residential numbers. So we could possibly end up losing 5.8 million overall, we could possibly end up gaining 7.8 million overall, but, you know, there's just no, no sound basis to base any of this on. And now I understand why these numbers are so easily changed, it's just all very tenuous and grasping at straws.
Yes, Mr. McDonald?
I can get that. I really sense we're getting off track significantly by getting caught up with past drafts and so on, but, but to be fair here, the wrong impression is on the table here. First of all, the impression that this comment by staff relative to positive spin, which by the way, is not a negative comment at all, and if you look at it in context of the paragraph, all it's really saying is that, rather than focus on the fact that there wasn't a demand analysis done, the reality is, the estimates you have are based on our history, and they're realistic estimates. So therefore, rather than focusing on the fact that we haven't done a study for this, realize the fact that you're talking 200 units over 20 years. That's a realistic number, and it's based, like, it's based on something more concrete. So I think it was a very logical comment, but the suggestion is almost that, because of that comment, you changed the numbers. That's not what happened at all. And in fact, there's other revenues that come into the net line here. Parking revenues, for instance. You received updated information on parking revenues between the draft and the final document that impacted these numbers. And so it isn't one variable, it's several variables, and, because as explained, these things happen between a draft and a final document. And so we're getting caught up on one unit relative to housing, which I think staff's comment makes all kinds of sense, because it's saying, you know, it does make sense, and the council directed staff to look at federal and provincial money. So isn't it realistic for staff to say, "The number they have makes sense," and to put us in a position so we can do what council asked us to do, isn't it appropriate to properly focus on those? I think it's a good comment. If we had a chance again, we might not use that particular term, positive spin, obviously we wouldn't use that word, but in terms of what the intent was with staff writing this paragraph, it makes all kinds of sense, and it's following the direction of council. But again, that's not how exclusively those numbers have changed. As Peter says, there were a lot of other variables, not the least being the parking revenues, which had a significant impact on that, so, anyway.
Counselor Kerrio.
Thank you, Worship. I'm going to change the topic a little bit, gentlemen. I was interested to see that, that you have also talked about the benefit to tourism that this, this project could have. Could you expand a little bit on that? Because there has been some comments made among the community that the tourism sector or the tourism industry is not in support of the project, which is not true. And this, this backs up exactly what the tourism people have been saying all along, that you think that this project, if it were to come into fruition, would benefit the tourist industry, or enhance the tourist industry. I see that you made that in your comments, just like you to elaborate a little bit on it.
Well, from my perspective, one of the glaring things is that people are coming to the area, but they're not staying very long. I brought that out in, in terms of my presentation, and that it suggests to me that there has to be more comprehensive reasons for them to stay for that extra day. And I don't think it's having more box retail necessary along the QEW that's going to make them stay here. There has to be something within the community that says, "Let's spend the weekend there instead of just going for the day, taking our, our visitors from wherever, driving over for the day, and going back in the evening." So I, I just feel that when, when you're trying to, to put a message out from a tourism point of view, that, that there's a lot of, perception is, is as important as anything else. And if they can think of a downtown where there are a lot of restaurants, and some very nice shopping, and other things to do, as well as the typical stuff that's gotten you through the, the, the long history of Niagara Falls, like Clifton Hill, and people going over in Niagara Falls in the barrel, and things like that, that it's the next level of maturity in terms of retail development. So that's where I think the linkage is, that there has to be a perception. I read this horrible thing in one of these Toronto Life kind of magazines recently. It was talking about Niagara Falls and saying, "You can visit there, and you can go over by rail." And when you visit the downtown, you, you will probably notice that they have no reason to look down on Niagara Falls, New York. It was a very disparaging kind of comment, that, that I just don't think does the community service. So I think the whole image and the whole perception has to be changed, and it's not having more, more entertainment kind of stuff, it's having something that's going to interest me. People love to shop. I mean, I, I interviewed the, the, the factory outlet people at great length. They're having a great time with this market. They have people coming here from literally the west side of Toronto, coming, spending the day and, and shopping. So if they have the right kind of product, people in Ontario love to travel and shop. I mean, it's, it's second nature to them. So that's where I think the, the linkage is with tourism. It's not more events kind of things, it's just having a broader base of things to keep them here when they get here.
I'm glad you said that, because we've been saying it, but it was nice to hear it from you.
Thank you. Are there any questions of Mr. Norman and Mr. Joseph from members of council? If not, we're going to move on to the next presenter. Thank you very much, gentlemen. At this time, I'd like to call Ms. [inaudible]. Ms. Van Hoorn, please, let's go forward. Excuse me?
I was, the firm panel, Kervoster, was retained by the Niagara Falls BIA, to look at the economic benefits of the downtown redevelopment program for Niagara Falls, and giving consideration, really, to the full, the implementation of the full SIP. So where the JLSUP report took us to the first two phases of the development, the study that we were asked to look at was really what would be the economic potential of doing a home run, the full SIP program over the next 20 years. So I'll begin just highlighting some of the study findings that we had, looking at what we mean in terms of the, the phased program, looking at some other comparable downtown revitalization programs and their success, and looking at development costs and the market potential, and then the economic benefits and the taxation benefits. Just to highlight at the forefront here, the study findings. In terms of economic benefits of implementing a full, the full SIP program, from the, from the development side, so these are the construction dollars around the development, we're talking here about a total investment of about $155 million to, this is both private sector and public sector investment in phases one and two. And then to implement the balance of the program, another $425 million, amounting to a total investment of close to $600 million. What that will do in terms of job creation and so on, off of the construction program alone, the number of employment, the number of jobs for phase one and two are about 570 jobs, another 1,600 for, for the balance, bringing to a total of about 2,200 jobs. And in taxes, on the development side, go from about 27 million for phases one and two, to 102 million for the overall. two to $102 million for the overall full development. In terms of spending impacts, so these are the dollars, the construction jobs have a lifespan to them, but the spending that will result because of the development program, these are ongoing jobs. The annual spending potential to implement phases one and two, as per the Joseph report, we've calculated off of the economic impact model at about $127 million, of which with the creation of about 868 ongoing jobs. With the full SIP, that's about 1,300 jobs and about $195 million in spending. So we've also highlighted there, new incremental to the city, because when you get into spending, you're really just taking dollars from one part of your shopping and part of your region and putting it downtown. So we looked at what it means in terms of actual new incremental spending to the city based on population growth, not only natural growth in the trade area and tourism growth, but also in terms of new residential growth downtown. So that amounts to about $67 million in spending and about 459 jobs created through Implementation of the full SIP program, if you factor in allowing for inflation and the phasing in of that program over 20-plus years, what it will mean in terms of incremental new taxes, these are cumulative taxes over the course of 25 years, is about $89 million coming off of new commercial development and new residential development, about $19 million coming off of the existing commercial and residential development downtown for a total of about $108 million. So this explains how we got to those numbers. First of all, we used the basis of the Joseph report to look at the building program for phases one and two. And as the gentleman explained here, 430,000 square feet of retail space and we've allowed for the residential component being at the lower end of their scenarios. So about 200 units coming in over the course of 10-year program there and then 596 parking stalls, either through one parking structure and some improvements. Bringing in the additional phases, going back now to the SIP plan, calls for another 370,000 square feet of commercial space. And actually, the SIP recommended, or suggested, I guess if you will, 2,258 residential units. We have allowed for, here we're thinking that that amount of residential over 20 years is probably on the very high end. So we've allowed really for two new high-rise developments, one at about 650 units and another at 400 units, bringing the total to 1,250 units over the course of the full 20-year program. And then implementing the balance of the infrastructure in terms of parking. There were other components also mentioned in the SIP that we have layered in. One of it, now I shouldn't say that, the office was not mentioned in the SIP, but in talking to the, one of the proponents for the downtown development, they suggested about 12,000 square feet of new built office space and retrofit on about 26,000 square feet. We've also allowed for a hotel, which was called for in the SIP. Here we're suggesting 120-room hotel, the implementation of the new civic square and the grand park, and then a performing arts theater in the final stages of the 20-year program where we called for about a plan there which would allow for about a 750-seat theater. When we look at comparable downtown revitalization programs, I'm brought, I guess, to the places to grow, the growth plan for the Greater Golden Horseshoe and its relevance to what Niagara Falls is trying to achieve through its downtown. It very much complements what is called for in the Smart World Plan in terms of a place to live, work, and play. So trying to cut down on commuting traffic, all of this type of thing really fits well with the overall plan. Other downtown revitalization plans that are occurring in other cities, we've listed here about 20 cities that are currently in various stages of going through this process. We're involved in, a few of them vary, for instance, the downtown, they've asked us to look at how to attract a hotel development to its downtown with a complement of conference space with that. And they're doing that again largely through residential high-rise condo growth overlooking the water, et cetera, there. We're also involved in a similar initiative in Oshwa. I'm from Burlington, so I'm well aware of what's going on in terms of Performing Arts Center and so on, what they're trying to do to revitalize their downtown. We looked at three, in the Joseph report, they used Oakville and Burlington as their comparables, other Ontario initiatives. We looked at three revitalization programs based in the U.S. They were, all of which are kind of located in or near major tourist areas and have utilized similar experiential type of retail, residential, and office redevelopment as a catalyst for reinvestments in their downtown. In terms of downtown Charleston, I understand that a number of the councillors have visited there. It's the second-largest city in South Carolina. It has gone through a revitalization process whereby the city actually started out with a one-block area as their starting point. And they did a public-private partnership there. The cost was about $86 million, included about 550,000 square feet of development, a 400-and-some-unit hotel, extensive conference and convention facilities, restaurant entertainment area, also a parking garage of about 440 spaces, and various retail shops around the perimeter. The plan took about 20 years as an overall revitalization plan, where the city invested about $12 million in terms of public infrastructure, and then they financed about $50 million through industrial revenue bonds. And the project created about 800 jobs. And in 1995, 10 years after they started the initiative, major national brands started investing capital such as Saks Fifth Avenue and Williams Sonoma, Gucci, et cetera. And they also injected a performing arts center in 2002. Similar initiatives took place in downtown San Diego with their gas lamp quarter. It has a population of about 30,000 people and they really built on the historic nature of their downtown, emphasizing the whole gas lamp history. And there they introduced new retail, residential, office, hotel, et cetera. One of the initiatives they did there was make sure that about 20% of the new residential coming into the program was priced as affordable housing for low-income families. So that plan took 30 years to be realized, starting in '76 out to 2006, and it's resulted in 94 historic buildings being renovated, about 100 restaurants and shops and nightclubs, et cetera, a major gentrification process. Downtown Wasu, that's in the state of Wisconsin, has a population of about 40,000 residents. And the city there in 1983 took a pretty significant economic gamble. It opened an eight-block enclosed shopping mall in its downtown. It was about 467,000 square feet. And the shopping mall was not a fortress type of structure, but was interfaced so that you could walk out to the street back and forth and into the mall. They also went through a various redevelopment program. They purchased some 400-block area in their downtown to create a public open square. And then they went through a full revitalization process as well, with success. That, again, was about a 20-year redevelopment program with a public investment of about $19 million and then another $39 million in private sector investment. It's created about 49 new businesses and 570-some jobs. So the development cost for the full implementation of the SIP, we've broken this into private sector and public sector. Using the average square foot cost and so on, you can see that the private sector element here amounts to about $498 million for the full implementation of the SIP. That's about 85% of the total cost. And then the public sector, we've included there the full complement of the infrastructure in the way of parking, road improvements, parks, et cetera. The civic square and then also included in there is the Performing Arts Center. And we've allowed for the same assumptions when it comes to land acquisition and so on as the June Joseph report. So here you can see in our estimates, phase one and two, we've estimated at a cost of about $22 million. These are in today's dollars. And then the balance of the program, when you're layering in, really the bulk of that is in the Performing Arts Center and the civic square, grand park, and so on. There's another $64 million, totaling $86 million over the 20-year investment process. So that, layering that in, makes the public sector investment about 15% of the total cost of the full SIP. Full SIP with the caveat of it being 1,250 residential units as opposed to what was called for as 2,500. The market potential for the full SIP, here, again, we have used the same assumptions as the Joseph report in looking at the same trade area. We've used that as the starting point, but just built out to the full implementation process. So the Niagara Falls population growth, you can see, will improve by about 10,000 residents over 20 years. And then based on that residential component, 200 units in phase one, we've allowed for an occupancy of two persons per dwelling there. So you can see that the downtown would increase in population from that residential component by over 2,000 people. So the full trade area works out to about 147,000 residents. In terms of tourists, these have been based on the same projections that we used for the People Mover Project in terms of visitation tourist potential over the next 25 years. We're dealing with a market right now of about 10.5 million tourists and we see that increasing to about 15.6 million by 2025. We've, as I said, used the same assumptions, same starting points as the Joseph report, looking at, they call for in the 35,000 square feet of space allocated for supermarket grocery store type of initiative. For the full program, you're seeing that increase to two facilities or 70,000 square feet. Based on the Joseph report, the gross potential sales in phase one amounted to about 17.8 million. And then we've layered in an abnormal amount for the tourist spend. So you can see that as in years, in the phase one, implementing that, 17.8 million come off of grocery sales, increasing to about 27 million with the full complement of 70,000 square feet. Incidentally, we have divided this out into the amount of sales that are actually attributable to that downtown residential growth due to the new SIP. So you can see that in the earlier stages, it's 700,000 or thereabouts based on those 200 units, increasing to about 4.3 million when you have better than 2,000 residents living downtown. The other, due to other residential growth in Niagara Falls, refers to growth that will occur naturally in the city of Niagara Falls over the next 25 years. I think that was about just under 10,000 new residents coming to live in the city. And then we have broken out the tourist sales, which in this case are pretty nominal. And the other is sort of repatriation of the expendable dollars that are being purchased on grocery items outside of the city back to the downtown itself. So you can see about 44% of the total sales result from that. In terms of specialty retail, again, just taking this out to the full complement of the SIP, which calls for 570,000 square feet and allowing for tourism spends as well. The phase one of the Joseph report identified about $46 million in potential sales for the specialty retail. We see that growing to about 125 million if the full complement is brought to fruition, with about 55% of that or 69 million coming from the repatriation of those expendable dollars back to the downtown. Restaurant potential, this was an area that wasn't specifically broken out in the Joseph report, but the plan called for about 40,000 square feet in phase one, increasing to about 70,000 in phase two and 130,000 by the time the full program came into play. We've allowed for some assumptions here in terms of sales per seat and number of times people eat out and what we could expect in the downtown market, both from residents and tourists. And the restaurant potential amounts to about 16 million in the phase one program, increasing to about 36 million when the full program is unveiled. We've also allowed for the hotel potential here. We've made the assumption that the hotel will be a boutique-style hotel of about 120 rooms in the downtown, operating at about a 58% occupancy, which is the current average for the city of Niagara Falls, with an average daily rate of about $175 and a double occupancy factor of about 1.9. That then amounts to tourist sales from room revenues of about 4.4 million. Also, we have layered in the assessment of a performing arts center. Here we're talking about a 750-seat center, which would attract about 100,000 people in terms of attendance and with average ticket prices in the range of about $15. So that would amount to revenue of about 1.8 million, layering in some operating subsidies, you're talking about 2.3 million coming from the Performing Arts Center. So the economic benefits of the, as I mentioned in the very beginning, this is just a repeat of that, the development impacts off of the full development would be 581 million, that's excluding land, which would amount to about 209 million in direct gross divested product. These benefits are just to the Niagara region. They don't account for the benefits that get incurred to the rest of the province and they are only direct benefits. I did not layer in indirect or induced benefits. They're strictly the direct. And in terms of visitation and spending impacts, we also, in terms of visitation, what we did was we looked at the revenue potential and then what that would mean in terms of number of visits to the downtown, dividing it out into peak season and off-season. And what you're talking about is potentially in the neighborhood of about 2.7 million gross site visits. But naturally, you're going to come to the downtown to do for more than one thing. So we've netted that out with about 25% of those visits being sole purpose, single purpose visits, and the 75% being multi-purpose visits, you're going to dinner and then to the Performing Arts Theater, et cetera. So it nets out to about 1.5 million visits with the development of the full SIP. And of those visits, about- And of those visits, about seven in ten will be related to your trade area residents, and three in ten will be derived from tourists. So the annual spending due to the new residential growth off of the full S I P program is about eleven percent of your total. Due to other natural growth in the city of Niagara Falls, it's about twenty-four percent. Tourist sales, about eighteen percent. But most of the sales, about ninety-two million dollars, is actually due to the repatriation of those expendable dollars back to Niagara Falls. All of that new spending, the one-hundred-and-ninety-four million dollars in spending, will actually be new spending to downtown Niagara Falls, of which about sixty-seven million will be incremental spending to the city of Niagara Falls because it is new, either based on new residents in the downtown or new population growth to the city of Niagara Falls. And in terms of economic impact, that spending, the direct benefits to Niagara region for the Phase One and Two, eight-hundred-and-sixty-eight jobs. For the full S I P, about thirteen-hundred-and-fifty-five jobs, of which taxes amount to about forty-five million dollars, with the bulk of those taxes going to the federal level. The annual direct impacts in this case, though, are only attributable to spending in the downtown, so the municipal portion there doesn't allow for the, wouldn't include the property taxes from the new residential growth in the downtown. So we've looked at that separately. When we looked at the current assessment, trying to get a picture of what is being paid right now, off of the, again, using the Joseph Report as our starting point, they've identified six-hundred-and-fifty-four residential units in the downtown with an approximate value, I think it was about one-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars per resident. So that amounts to seventy-two-million-dollar assessed value, of which the city portion is now collecting taxes in the neighborhood of about three-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand dollars. In terms of the commercial space, we have forty-one percent occupied, fifty-nine percent vacant space, for a total of about four-hundred-and-forty square feet currently. And off of the average assessments and the B I A, they're currently paying about twenty-six million, assessed, commercial assessment, paying in the neighborhood of about one-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand in total taxes. So the total taxes being collected currently are in the neighborhood of about four-hundred-and-eighty-four-thousand for the existing downtown. When we layer in now the potential assessment, moving this forward, although it's in two-thousand-and-seven dollars, we've made some assumptions here on what will happen, and those assumptions have been based on what has happened in some of those other U.S. comparables, but also using the Joseph Report and some assumptions there as well. But looking at those downtown residences basically doubling, the existing residences doubling in value over the next twenty years, the new twelve-hundred-and-fifty residential units value those at about three-hundred-thousand dollars per unit. And then the occupied space, assuming that the vacant space now becomes all occupied space, and that the rental rates currently being paid right now off the averages, assessments and so on, will more than triple with the new space commanding a premium. And so the total new taxes to the downtown, or the total complement, existing and new, will amount to about four million dollars post the implementation of the full S I P. That's taxes on an annual basis. And then, in conclusion, we've allowed for inflation, and then the phase development program overall, over the next twenty-plus years. So that you can see that the cumulative taxes to the city of Niagara Falls over the next twenty-five years by the implementation of the S I P will amount to about ninety-million dollars cumulatively off of the new commercial and residential space, and nineteen-million dollars off of the existing space, existing improved space, for a total of about one-hundred-and-eighteen-million dollars in cumulative taxes over the next twenty-five-plus years. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Hoohol. I have questions from Counsel Iannone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Hoohol, I have to say, if we can go back to the screen that shows the Year One and Two, twenty-two million, Year Balance, sixty-four million, Final S I P, eighty-six million of public dollars, I'd appreciate it. I did ask to speak at that time, but--
Yes, I want to let her continue on, so--
It wasn't allowed.
That's right.
How do I get back?
That would have saved all this.
So it's the public sector one that you're--
Correct.
Trying to read off a very tiny printer. I think it might be around here. Bear with me. This one here, probably, public sector?
Yes, okay. Ms. Hoohol, did you understand our motion to cap spending to the downtown to up to twelve million over twenty years?
What I understood from the mandate that I was given from the B I A was to look at the program in terms of the recommended strategic, the S I P program.
Oh, I understand. You're here doing exactly what you were paid to do. I understand that clearly. So I want to say this to, I want to say this to the B I A. This whole presentation that you gave us was predicated on the completion of the entire S I P. Am I correct?
With the exception of the full complement in the S I P called for two-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty-eight residential units, and we've allowed for twelve-fifty.
Okay. The report that we paid for, the Henry Joseph Report, shows us that we're not even close to being able to achieve the recommendations in the S I P, which I'm going to make a motion about in one moment. It tells us that we would be fortunate, challenged, I think was the word they used, to even be able to complete a successful Phase One. So as I watch you go through all phases, and understand that council capped the spending of up to twelve million over twenty years, our commitment to the C I P, I guess I would say, I don't think we should let anybody go on with the illusion anymore that this council is ever going to support the completion of the S I P. Our consultant study, which we just paid through you, Mr. Mede, and Mr. McDonald, how much was our Henry Joseph study?
Fifteen thousand dollars.
Fifteen?
Yes.
Fifteen thousand dollars to have them explain to us that the S I P that we passed predicated on Mr. Lichtman's presentation to us is not achievable. It's even challengeable to achieve the first phase. So if we were to go back to the guiding document that we're alluded to half a million times, that is the C I P. The premise that we passed in the C I P was to give private business the ability to access grants, loans, incentives, waiver of development charges, many incentives that we also passed for the main and ferry who are actually taking advantage of it, and as did somebody downtown most recently. This council shouldn't give anybody the illusion anymore that we're going to fulfill this entire S I P. So my motion on the floor right now, because what is before us in Henry Joseph's report is not the S I P passed by council. It is a dramatically modified plan. And I would also say that only Alderman Wing had the foresight to understand how flawed the former S I P was. She's the only one who voted against it. At the time, we used the consultant, who was the consultant to Mr. Lichtman. I think the S I P put before us was strictly Mr. Lichtman's plan, and I could whip his plan to shreds now based on Henry Joseph's numbers here. I mean, if his Gibbs Market Study says this, that could have saved us a dramatic amount of money. If his Gibbs Market Study that he refused to give to council was dramatically different, then our report puts to rest what the Gibbs Market Study would say. That's what we counted on our consultant to do and say to us. And just one question before I make my motion. You spoke about residential development downtown, and you heard Mr. Joseph say that we don't have a comprehensive analysis. Do you have a comprehensive analysis?
No. I based my assumptions on the S I P with the Joseph Report, and the analysis was done on what is the economic assessment of that.
Okay, thank you. And if we go back to comments directed to our staff in order to supply the consultant with guidelines as they wanted to see the June eighth report come out, one of our staff sent to Mr. Darbston an email that said, finally, the unfortunate conclusion that one draws after reading this analysis is that the downtown revitalization project is not a commercial development initiative. It is a residential project. As a result, the disposal of surplus city-owned lands, which is covered in our recommendations here that we'll vote on later. As a result, the disposal of city-owned surplus land should be done strategically so that the right mix of commercial and residential development occurs on larger sites. So that said, in having passed a motion unanimously that we are capping our spending at up to twelve million over twenty years, I make a motion to throw out the S I P as passed, and use the C I P as our guiding document with, I'm trying to find the word, with our ability to use the Henry Joseph Report as amending documentation, and that this, because this report states that the former S I P voted upon is not achievable. So I guess to simplify my motion, Mr. Clerk, we throw out the S I P and we use the C I P as our guiding document.
Well, we have a motion on the floor by Counsel Iannone, seconded by Counsel Wing. I'm not sure, are you referring to a reference of the C I P as opposed to the S I P for guideline?
Yeah, I thought it was clear on that, that we would use the C I P as our guiding document from here on out in regards to our revitalization, or our limiting of monies to the downtown.
Counsel DiDatti?
I just wondered if we could get staff to comment on--
Okay. Perhaps, Mr. Darbston, could you address that, please?
Yes, to Mr. Mayor. The Henry Joseph Report clearly puts a focus on the downtown revitalization effort rather than a very ambitious program, which is the S I P program. The C I P identified short-term, medium-term, and long-term targeted projects. We are talking about the kinds of projects that the S I P talked about were the short- and medium-term projects. But the S I P collapsed the timeframe into a very short timeframe. It was a very ambitious implementation schedule. The notion here is, by returning to the C I P, you'll have longer timeframes to implement these targeted projects, and also with the Henry Joseph Report, the targeted projects are now more focused. So we're talking about, rather than the full streetscaping of Queen Street in Phase One, we're talking about a limited streetcap program. Rather than a very large parking structure, we're talking about a smaller one, and in terms of the Western Gateway, we're not talking about doing that. We're trying to focus our attention on the eastern part of the downtown. Hopefully, that clarifies the--
Counsel DiDatti?
Not exactly. Thank you, Raship. Well, my question is, you did answer part of it. In regard to Counsel Iannone's recommendation of following the C I P rather than the S I P, what's your feeling on that? Is that, would you advise in favor of that, first of all, and second of all, or are we better off to say that we need to follow the Henry Joseph Report rather than either of them? I'm just wondering your planning perspective on that, Mr. Darbston.
Okay, I try to rephrase that. The C I P, again, had a different timeframe. That was probably the difference between the C I P and the S I P was the timeframe for improvements. Rather than a very short-term implementation schedule, the C I P contemplated a longer one, and that's the fundamental difference. What Henry Joseph has essentially done is confirm the C I P program, which has a little bit longer timeframe and a more focused amount of spending.
Counsel, I think that's a fair assumption, and we've always said that the timeframe that we're looking at before in two years was very, very narrow and may not be achievable, and that was a concern we expressed additionally. And then the fact the dollar is being available in such a short period of time may have been a question as well. Any other questions of Ms. Hoohol from the members of council? Okay. Thank you. We have a motion on the floor. Thank you very much. We have a motion on the floor, then, the members of council, and your comments with regard to the motion on the floor. Counsel Thompson?
How does that relate to the parking structure?
Okay. Mr. Darbston, with respect to that, the C I P as opposed to the S I P with regard to the parking structure?
I'm just trying to think. I mean, these are elements that are contained in the C I P as well. Essentially, what we're trying, our recommendations this evening, I think we're, we closed the gap, where we didn't specifically mention the C I P, but all of the improvements that we're talking about in the downtown are essentially found in the C I P document. What Henry Joseph has done is provided a more focused perspective on that. So I'm not exactly sure, by simply saying that we're going to follow the C I P without following the recommendations of staff, I'm not sure if we're getting the direction that we need.
Mr. Reddick?
I think we understand the direction of council, and it's really to accept the report presented by Henry Joseph. That will become our guide and replace the S I P. But what the staff report is really asking you to consider is to direct us, recognizing that Henry Joseph has suggested a condensed version of the S I P, that if you accept that principle, then the recommendations are asking council to consider directing staff to finish off the studies that were in the midst of doing with a scaled-down version as it relates to parking structure. It suggests focus on one parking structure, but a scaled-down version of the parking structure. But the reality is, when we come back with that information, we will not be recommending to build a parking structure right off the bat. That has to be dealt with, and I think Henry Joseph made reference to the fact, when there is a demand for a parking structure, then we'll worry about a parking structure. So that will be the kind of information that will come back with the study.
Counsel Thompson?
Thank you. That's the answer I wanted. If it's necessary, please build it.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, yes, Counsel DiDatti?
My question is, if we vote in favor of this motion, are we rejecting the Henry Joseph Report? Or I'm a little bit just confused on that.
Okay. Mr. McDonald, oh, sorry, Mr. Clerk.
May I be bold enough to make a suggestion, and I think this is what Counsel Iannone was getting at, that maybe if you make the motion, use the C I P as the guiding document buttressed by the market overview for downtown revitalization. I think that's what you're trying to accomplish. I know you're searching for that word.
Okay. That may be caught by a little further. Counsel Wing?
As Counsel Iannone referenced, I was the sole vote last year against adopting the S I P, and I think what this motion essentially does, which is why I was so happy to second it, is that it essentially unadopts the S I P. And, you know, when I read that document last year, I thought it was overblown, overambitious, full of all kinds of silly things, and I'm really glad to see us shut it at last.
Any other comments from members of council? Counsel Iannone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In regards to the parking structure, because we've all talked amongst ourselves to say we're never going to support twelve-point-two-million dollars for a parking structure, my motion, our motion that we passed unanimously was up to twelve, twelve million dollars over twenty years on necessary infrastructure improvements. Very clearly, when we campaigned, we heard door-to-door-to-door-to-door, and we've all said it's the same, we're not paying for a parking garage. So short of somebody coming in to do that with their own money, I can't see, that parking garage is not, was not included in the up to twelve million over twenty years. So over the weekend, when we talked amongst ourselves, somebody said to me, why is this parking garage back for a fourth time? And I guess I would say, that's a good question. We're voting again in a staff report that has a thirteen, and inherits a thirteen-million, thirteen-million-dollar parking garage, and we've taken it out three times prior to this. So I can make a motion subsequent to this one, saying, take the parking garage out of that, and we'll look at the rest of the streetscaping if that makes council feel any better. But at this point, nobody has agreed to fund a parking garage.
I think that's fairly clear. Okay, we'll call the vote. All of them in favor? Carrie Yanaski, thank you. Okay, we do have two more presenters. I'd like to move on with them, please, if we could. We have two deputation requests from the council. Pierre George here with the chief of, he's been very patient in waiting. Pierre, please come forward. Just for the benefit of the record, if you can, if you can give us your address, please.
My address?
Yeah.
Twenty-five Mansfield Avenue, Toronto, Ontario.
Thank you.
I don't even know what a deputation is, like a sheriff's assistant or something. I'd better introduce-- I'd better introduce myself because I don't want to lead you astray. I'm the poet laureate of the city of Toronto. For those of you who don't know what a poet laureate is, it's a cultural ambassador appointed by a municipality to represent the arts. So if you ask, "Well, what am I doing here?" Well, that's a wrong...
Pierre, could you address the council, because they can see you on the screen behind.
Oh, you can.
They can see you, so.
Hello. First of all, thank you for inviting me, Mr. Mayor and the council. As a cultural spokesperson for, for culture, I got into city revitalization and urbanization because I gave some talks as an ambassador of culture in Toronto. And they coincided with a contemporary craze for creative cities and the notion of how creative economies, creative sectors are good for the commercial sector, about marrying together in a contemporary craze called creative economies spearheaded by Richard Forda and Charles Landry in England, et cetera, et cetera. Next thing I knew, I was on federal and provincial committees looking at revitalization, the relationship between social capital, people, and culture economies, and how culture was good for the economy. And in fact, you had no prosperity without looking at social capital, lifestyle, and the quality of people first. Blah, 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 blah. What am I doing here? I love Niagara Falls. Is that baldly put enough? I love Niagara Falls. I've been coming here on the average of once or twice every week for the last 20 years. And should I tell you an ugly little secret? Sure. I've come down here many times, and don't tell the Canadian Urban Institute and David Cronby in Toronto, but precisely because the downtown of Niagara Falls was not revitalized. I can tell by the silence that I sound like a strange bird. I am one of those strange people. I grew up in old towns like Baltimore. We had ships, stevedores, it was rundown. I wasn't afraid. And by the way, there was a comment earlier about the downtown squalor here competing with that of Niagara Falls in New York. I doubt it very, very much. I've been to downtown Niagara Falls in New York. You've got party plans at least out here on the, on the street. I'm not here to put in my two cents strategically about revitalization in Niagara Falls. I have, I have no vested interest. I'm just here hospitably bringing regards from Toronto as a goodwill gesture and saying hello and maybe dropping a few observations about the notion of revitalization. The discussion is a lot of figures, a lot of practically prone con, if you don't mind my saying so. Pardon my arrogance, I don't live here, but pardon my heart is here. I escaped from the glass-shelving valley of the Gardner Expressway to come to Niagara Falls as a, as a reprieve. Let me restore a little bit of the discussion, a little bit. Directly outside this, this building is a kiosk, a kiosk. And it has a sign over it, and it says, "Community Bulletin Board." It doesn't say, "Tourist Bulletin Board." It doesn't say, "Retailer's Bulletin Board." It doesn't say, "Revitalizers Bulletin Board." It says, "Community Bulletin Board." That sounds too obvious to really bear contemplation, but I'm going to contemplate it anyway. Niagara Falls, like many places, has been dedicated to getting tourists. Toronto, too. How do you get tourists all over the world? The cities that I've visited and we've visited, they're about how to get tourists, how to lever the tourist dollar. If, if the assumption is that tourists come only for natural wonders, and by God, you're blessed with the eighth wonder of the world here, or the seventh, if tourists are attracted just by retail shops, if in fact citizens are enlivened only by retail and commerce, then you have no problems here. You have none whatsoever. Your downtown will be revitalized sooner or later, if you don't mind my saying so. When you run out of room in the other places in town, out of hotel rooms, out of retail shops, it falls due and whatever, this will get revitalized immediately. It'll happen, it'll get done. And will that solve everything? I suspect there may be something maybe left unresolved, and that is the citizen of Niagara Falls. I've heard a lot of affection about the downtown in Niagara Falls from a lot of residents and, and, and people here. They want to repossess it. They don't want to lever it to make more money off somebody. And the assumption that retail and social life, somehow you can create social life by retail, is a false assumption. It's a contemporary lifestyle gentrifying delusion. The cities I've gone to, the communities I've gone to, Burlington, Oakville, Barcelona, London, wherever you go, the reason that properties are $900,000 in Burlington or Oakville is because they started with a culture base, a culture base. I'm not plugging cultures for the sake of culture here, but it wasn't just a matter of a few lamplights evoking the 19th century and 18th century. Those areas, even Elm Street in Buffalo now is getting revitalized, is getting revitalized because of a grassroots culture. The communities themselves are living again, they're living out the culture of their narratives, their stories, their identities, just as Niagara Falls has stories, narratives, identities, the people living immediately in this area. It is a culture involved in revitalization, without which they're planting flowers without preparing the soil. And the long-term economic benefit is short, is not there. The short-lived economic benefit is. But if you want a long-term benefit, people go to places where they can't gamble and see the fall, they'll only go because those places have a color, the cultural color of a live-in area where the citizens live, work, play, and are creative together. And building families, communities playing together, encountering each other, having civil encounter is creativity. It is culture, living culture, not historical culture. And in none of these discussions, if you don't mind my saying so, have I heard words like culture and creativity. I think an interim solution is not a bad idea. It's for people to start re-inhabiting and walking. And I don't think that a mass monumental effort of retail work right now and worrying about this and that is absolutely necessary to, to, to be done. It requires a cultural initiative on the part of the city. You have a parts, recreation, and culture department. And without offending anyone on the arts and culture committee, they are desperately underfunded, valiant, and doing very modest gestures because I don't think they're getting the support that they need with the concept of culture in the broad sense, not just the fluff, not just the poetry and the theater and what have you, but culture in the broad sense. If you have a cultural base, if you open up the downtown to events, if you let poetry reading happen, if there's a dialogue between the owners of places and the artists in places liaising to the city culture division, you'll have people curious to come downtown, taking a walk. When there's enough of them, they won't be afraid to be walking alone. Things will happen, a buzz will take place. The citizenry develops its own initiatives apart from public fund initiatives and private sector initiatives. There's a full other middle area called the civic heart, looking for civic delight, and it will find its way and regenerate. And that's how revitalization is done in a healthy way. The opera houses, the theaters, they all come after the fact, after there's a base, a foundation, a cultural base called the citizenry, the citizenship of Niagara Falls and its own narrative. That's all I really wanted to say to you. Thank you for hearing me. I'm going to invite the glass shelving.
Thank you, Pierre. Thank you. The next deputation we have is a request from Sheila Mulligan.
Mayor Selcy, members of council and staff. My name is Sheila Mulligan. My home is at 4671 River Road in Niagara Falls. Before tonight, I was encouraged to see that the downtown revitalization was on the right track, based on this most recent status report. A revised, refocused, and more realistic approach to this redevelopment is the only viable solution at this point, and the only one with any chance for success. The most critical recommendation in today's status report on downtown revitalization from my perspective is the completion of the Eastern Gateway environmental assessment. Until this assessment is complete, I cannot make any decisions to move forward with regard to my family property, which stands at the entrance to the Eastern Gateway. The environmental assessment must be completed now. We cannot continue to wait indefinitely while consultants do additional studies and consider design options again and again and again with no real progress in sight. Visualizations, assumptions, and reviews do nothing for property owners who are anxious to be a part of this downtown revitalization, but who are at a standstill until this council and staff, with all the right information, make these recommendations of revitalization a reality. The incentives being offered by the city, loans and grants for private revitalization and redevelopment are not accessible and won't be available until the EA is complete for myself and my neighbors. Furthermore, if the city is to develop a land-assembly strategy, the key stakeholders, local residents and commercial property owners like myself, need to be involved immediately. Ongoing communication should have been a cornerstone of the downtown revitalization from the start, but to date, it hasn't happened. I want to be a part of downtown revitalization, and I am anxious to be a key partner with the city. I hope that 2007 and 2008 are the years for action, not by doing further studies and adding meaningless figures to the city budget, but by starting over with this more realistic, achievable approach and carrying it through to completion as quickly as possible. Finally, after 14 months of ongoing talk, nothing has been done. A lot of money wasted, a lot of time wasted, and it's disgusting. Niagara Falls should be ashamed of itself.
All right, don't you have a comment?
No, it's to staff. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to staff. Ms. Mulligan's comments in regards to she has to wait for the EA studies to be complete before she can apply for the grants and incentive programs. My first question would be, how long? Suggestion C is complete the EA studies for the Eastern Gateway. You've already, through you to staff, who I would like to answer is probably John O'Connell. We've already approved that a number of funds. Is that not already going forward and paid for?
Mr. McDonald, you counsel?
It's in the process. We've stalled on a little bit, waiting for a direction from council on the meeting tonight. And the recommendation here, the request for the recommendations for us to move ahead and finalize.
And I believe, Counselor, we've approved 1.66 million to be spent on those, the EA's and other matters. And Mr. McDonald, you might want to elaborate on that.
There's no request here for any funding. We do have the funding allocated as Counselor Iannoni suggests. Money is in the budget, but we've been waiting for this direction tonight.
I guess, Mr. Mayor, my point is, there's a recommendation here that we've already passed, like that's already in effect, we've done it. I guess my question would be, when's it going to be complete and when can Ms. Mulligan apply for the grants and incentive programs? And I also have a concern is, will the available money that we have for the grants and incentive programs that other people can start to apply for run out before she has the ability to apply for the incentives?
Okay, I don't know if we can answer that, we'll just see. Mr. Holman, can you address that, or Mr. Dulevik? With regard to the EA timing?
Through your worship. The EA study has been ongoing. There have been numerous options that staff have looked at, and they've come down to, suggested in the visualization. There have been some comments received, and we're forecasting, I think by year end, the completion of the EA, final report to this council as to what the preferred option is, and hopefully agreement from council and moving forward.
The concern that we heard earlier with respect to the timing of the applications and respect to the completion of EA, possibly our planning director can answer that question with regard to, to timing. Is that going to hold up applications that are pending in the eastern section of the Queen Street location?
Yeah, so the, on the Eastern Gateway specifically, is a matter of whether or not properties will be, need to be acquired, and therefore by issuing loans and grants for facade improvements, when a property may be acquired, it would be a redundant matter. The other aspect about loans and grants are, we're basically awaiting urban design guidelines for facade improvements, and those guidelines are done. So only with respect to areas that, under the environmental assessment programs, are possible acquisition areas, those areas would not be subject to current grants or loan programs.
Can you give us the timing of the studies then? I think that was the question.
Well, Mr. Dulevik indicated by the end of the year, the EA study will be complete for the Eastern Gateway. And therefore, council, once council makes a decision about what you want to do on the Eastern Gateway, then we can start issuing those grant programs.
Counselor Iannoni?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We just threw out the SIP. That, if I remember correctly, the comment made at the time it was passed was, "My property's in that park and I'm not a tree." The SIP highlights that Ms. Mulligan's property would have to be expropriated in order to follow that plan. We have just thrown out that SIP plan. As a matter of fact, I think those of us that voted against expropriating certain residents' properties, I don't know if we've changed our mind, I certainly haven't changed my She complies, if I understand correctly, with all the guidelines within our, our grants and incentive and loan programs. Mr. Dulevik says it's going to be the end of this year. So she's got five more months to wait to, now, so we're looking at 2008. Mr. Darbison says, based on whether that's an expropriated piece of property. Well, I'm going to say very clearly here, we threw out that SIP, which highlighted the need to expropriate her property to reconfigure that end of the Eastern Gateway. So, I'm sure we were clear on that again, and, you know, I see the first part of that motion, complete the Eastern Gateway, that's already, council's already approved that. The parking structure is going to be voted on very shortly. And the comments are, we're going to, that might be land that's going to be expropriated. Do we have the ability now to say, "We've scrapped the SIP, we've scrapped that vision of expropriating her land and, and putting a park there, or expropriating her land to do a turnaround," or, and Dean shaking his head, no, but I didn't ask him, "Expropriating the land to do a turnaround, or perhaps hope the NPC is going to see our way." Does she still have to wait for us to vote on whether we're going to expropriate her land or not?
Mr. McDonald, you wish to answer that question?
As the planner says, it's quite appropriate to wait. I mean, that's why we're doing an EA, so we can consider alternatives. That will be council's call when the time comes. You know, we're not focusing on expropriation, we're focusing on getting an appropriate entrance way to the city. And we'll see what comes from that. But in the end, there will be foundations mentioned by staff, you'll be able to make a call on it. You may have to acquire some property. I don't know if it will be this property or which properties it will be, but of course you want to wait and get a look at those reports. That's why we're spending 1.6 million dollars on all the studies. To give a grant now and have a property redeveloped, who are in the midst of doing a study that may require some part of that property, it may not, but it might. It just doesn't make any sense.
Thank you, fair enough, Mr. McDonald. When you talk about alternatives, when we passed the now scrapped SIP, Mr. Valgoris spoke about there being a number of alternatives that had come out of those public meetings, and this was the one that he brought forward to...
Because the council of the day didn't see the alternatives. There might be an alternative in the SIP that we paid for at the time that didn't expropriate long-term residential properties, but I guess my question too is, we paid for it, we didn't get to see all the alternatives. Do we own those alternatives, and can we take a look at them?
Mr. McDonald?
We can look at any of the alternatives that were put on the table, and again, that's why we hired consultants, which was a little early before, we're looking for their opinions, and they'll come forward with the recommendations that they think are best suited for this particular challenge we have.
I understand that, Mr. McDonald, but what I'm saying too is, when Mr. Valgora made his presentation, he spoke about a number of alternatives. The council of the day was only given one to vote on. They weren't given all the alternatives to vote on. We might have voted on a different concept that was put before us on that day. So we do own those alternatives, and if we want to take a look at them, they're available to us?
Certainly, through your worship, and Mr. Dulevik may comment, but Mr. Valgora didn't do any real work relative to an EA. He just wrote some concepts.
Well, I believe that.
The company we've hired to do the EA is looking at all of the alternatives that were even suggested by Mr. Valgora. So all of the options you're talking about are in the hands of the consultant that's doing the EA, and they're all being considered, and they will come back if they want to think things are most appropriate. So they're all ready on the table.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, members of council? Members of council? Okay. Pleasure, Council, with respect to the recommendations contained in the report. Yes, Counsel DiDati?
Move the report.
Okay, mover of the report is Counsel DiDati. Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second to that motion? Excuse me.
I couldn't hear it.
Is there a second to that motion? Okay, the motion fails. Counsel Iainoni?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did bring four motions to make. I think I've only put two on the table. But if we're going to use, we'll use the status report on the downtown revitalization, and maybe it'll be easier for council if we go through them. And if it's, I'd like to make a motion to council that we vote independently on the motions before us, because there's some I agree with, there's some I don't. So may I take them separately, Mr. Clerk?
You can take it separately.
Thank you. In light of the market overview and economic analysis, the council directs that the various downtown studies be completed, and a revised phased approach for downtown development be adopted as follows. The first one is, A, we're focusing on retail and civic improvements to the eastern section of the downtown. And I guess my question was, does this include expropriation? And that question was answered. And I guess I'd say this, because that, I think that's premature when you follow down, and it says we have to complete the EA studies to decide how we're going to do it in that area. So to my mind, that is a premature motion, and I move that we deny that.
Do you have a second to that motion? Is that a question? You have a second, Counsel Fisher? Sorry. Yes, Mr. Clerk?
Well, you made a motion earlier where you basically said that you're going to use the CIP buttressed by the market overview as the guiding principle for downtown revitalization. And one of the principles that was espoused in the market overview is that you focus retail development on the eastern portion of downtown. So I don't want council to sort of have contradictory motions here.
Okay, to that point, Mr. Mayor, then I'm confused, because I thought I heard Mr. McDonald explain that we have to finish the EA studies for the Eastern Gateway in order to decide what it is we're actually going to do there. So has that motion then deferred that, A, until the EA studies are back?
Let's have Mr. McDonald give a comment.
The EA is actually separate, and EA really refers to the handling of the traffic flow at the gateway. This section A really refers to looking at the retail development and the streetscape work, really from St. Clair down, and basically the eastern section, just saying, "We're not going to do the whole Queen Street, we just want to narrow it down to this smaller area." And that was really the heart of Mr. Joseph's report. And we got the impression, and I think that's exactly what council wants, because the CIP said do it all, Mr. Joseph's saying do the smaller section. So A, just means stay focused on the smaller section in the Eastern Gateway. And it really, that doesn't really have anything to do with the other recommendation C, which means EA, the EA is just dealing with a specific component of that, which is the traffic.
Okay.
Then to move it along, maybe I'll do it this way. I will move staff recommendations.
Sorry, in what, what A?
I will move staff recommendations eliminating section C, Part Two, and parking structure at Erie Avenue and Park Street, and refocusing of the retail and civic improvements to the eastern section of the downtown. I think if we have to wait for an EA to look at the very eastern section of the downtown, that we should look at focusing on the section between Queen and Erie right now, so that we do have a focus to start forward. And maybe through you to staff, is the Queen and Erie, if we're to focus the dollars that we've allocated right now between the Queen and Erie section in order to give a kickoff of some sort to the monies that we've put on the table, that's up to twelve million over twenty years, will that eliminate Ms. Mulligan's concerns on the completion of the EA down there and have us focus between Queen and Erie?
Mr. Darbison, can you answer that question?
Counsel Iainoni?
Counsel Iainoni? Sorry, Mr. Clerk?
Can we focus on, rather than the entire eastern section of the downtown, to the Queen Street and Erie section right now?
Well, I simply have to clarify one thing. An EA, as mentioned, has to do with traffic movement. The other aspect is retail. That's what we're talking about here in A. They're separate, they're different.
Fair enough, thank you, Mr. Mayor. He's talking about retail. We have our own staff report tell us that this is a residential redevelopment, not a retail redevelopment. So, I mean, Counsel DiDati couldn't get a second on the report, because we're not happy with all the recommendations in the report. We're happy with just a number of them, or sections of some of them. I tried to make a motion, Mr. Yafida said that it wasn't along the lines of what we've prior approved. So if we can't pass the status report on the downtown, and we're only looking for certain sections, maybe I'll throw to other members of council then, what are we looking to approve?
But let's go back to the environmental assessment. Mr. Darbison, are we compelled, under the EA, to complete it at this point before we make any further decisions? Okay, Mr. Holman?
Mr. Mayor, the difficulty we're having with the EA is that we can't simply justify the improvements to the physical road layout based on traffic volumes, or collision history, or things that we would normally do for an EA process. What's key in this decision is the economic impact from redevelopment in this area. And by having a decision made on whether we stick with the SIP, or whether we go with the Joseph report and the CIP, that nails down that element that would allow us to finish the EA. We cannot acquire any property until we complete the EA process. We still have to go back and have at least one more public meeting, and we're going to invite, we're going to share this information with our consultant, who will come back, and he'll use that information to come up with a short list of alternatives, and cost, and bring information back to council. So this is a critical step in completing the EA, and it's the reason why we've had to put it on hold.
So to speak to that matter, then, Counsel Iainoni, it seems difficult, then, that we eliminate one C, which refers to the completion, where you don't want to complete the EA studies. It sounds like we're compelled to do so. That's what Mr. Holman is saying? Is that correct? Sorry, Mr. Holman, is that correct?
Well, I mean, we can stop the study at any time, but we're relying on this information to make the decision to move ahead with the EA.
Okay, we got a number of questions, Counsel Iainoni?
To that point, then, I'll make a motion. I move that we approve staff's recommendations absent the thirteen million dollar parking structure at Erie Avenue and Park Street, and conclude that with number three, that there will no further decisions being made without a special meeting of council upon the completion of the downtown studies with a proposed project construction schedule and budget for council's two thousand and eight.
Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second to that motion?
Except for the parking structure.
Is there a second, Counsel Kerrio? Okay. Now, CI wants to make a comment.
Just looking for clarification on the, what does it do to three? Three is just basically saying, "Come back when the study's done."
Well, that's what I just said, and I said, and that will take us, my recommendations will take us to three, and there's not going to be any other decisions made without a special meeting of council, as highlighted in number three.
The only real amendment is get rid of the garage.
Yeah, and I think all our sticking point was the thirteen million dollar garage exceeds, okay. And there's that motion.
So members of council, we have the recommendation before us, and there's speakers to that. Counsel Thompson?
No, I think the only one we really want to take out is D, defer any road improvements for the western gateway. The rest of them, other than taking out the parking ramp, I believe are reasonable. Number two is just being, providing proactive leadership for a strategy to accomplish these things. So that's pretty not a problem for council. And then the special meeting, I expect that this will be regular reports coming in and giving us the opportunity to make decisions anyway. Will it not?
Well, I'm not sure. If you want to delete, then, the reference to the western gateway, we are saying defer any road improvements for the western gateway at this point. That's already being stated in the motion, so I'm not sure if Mr. Darbison could address that. I think that already says it's.
Our recommendation is to defer not to do the road improvements, the western gateway. Focus all of our, in one small area.
Right. Counsel Peter Angelo?
Thanks, your worship. Had a couple of questions, actually, about item number two. Part A talks about the city packaging, the properties that we own, they're made available through request or proposal. This would be different than, I guess, the decisions that councils made in the past, where council actually agreed to sell the lands to Mr. Lichtman's organization or his group, but that the sale was tied to an MOU. That's correct?
A number of conditions, I believe, as well.
So this is, I guess, basically changing course and saying that the lands will no longer be available, the city-owned lands, that is, will no longer be available to just Mr. Lichtman, that we're going to do an RFP, and that anyone can bid on them. Am I correct?
Mr. Darbison, do you want to address that?
That points to another point that you.
Okay, Counsel, just a few. Okay, Mr. Clerk?
Well, just to that, you're correct, exactly. Those were the motions that were passed last council. There was never an MOU that was satisfactory, negotiated between the two parties. And also, I believe that you, this council, did make a motion earlier in the year that no action be taken with regard to sale of any city-owned properties downtown with historic Niagara at this time. So that's already on the books. Obviously, in an RFP process, any of the proponents downtown could make bids, so there's nothing precluding historic Niagara or some form thereof.
I'm happy with that process, your worship. And to be, your worship, we talked about a land-assembly strategy. I was wondering if perhaps that can give us some insight into what they perceive as the land-assembly, I guess, strategy. Are we looking to, once again, use expropriation in our assembly strategy?
Mr. Darbison?
Yes, one of the major findings of the Joseph report was, we need to concentrate more fully on residential revitalization of the downtown. It's a very, very important ingredient. We need, staff has taken a position here that we need to be proactive, try to assemble properties, to create RFPs, to promote developers to develop downtown residential housing. That's one of the key recommendations that Mr. Joseph made. So that's the thought behind the recommendations on land-assembly, that we should be proactive, we should try to use our offices under the CIP program to go out and assemble lands, and then make them, those lands available for residential housing purposes.
Okay, thank you. That is your question, Counsel Peter Angelo?
Yeah, your worship, I guess, then, to follow up with that, I would imagine that council would be in full control of any type of expropriation.
Yes, again, a director.
Definitely. You would direct all matters by that question.
Mr. McDonald, you want to make a comment?
Just actually, I would ask council, if, actually, I could ask Mr. Dulevik to speak just for a moment, and I appreciate what council is saying about the parking structure. And I think we're all agreeing that parking structure would be something that we wouldn't consider until there was a real proven demand based on retail development in the downtown area. But it is part of our overall parking strategy that we're looking at, and I'm just asking to explain how it fits together. Some may want that work done, just so you know how it fits into the overall strategy.
Mr. Dulevik?
Yeah, through your worship, I mean, tied in at the time when we did the parking structure EA, as a precursor to it, we had to do a parking action plan. And that's something that we still want to do as staff, and to let us know, you know, if this development does take place, what parking will need to be in place to support the residential and the retail that could come on in the future. And it may say, sometime down the road, with the lands available, we may have to get to a parking structure. But that could be years down the road, and it would be very much dependent on a business plan. So I don't want to say that you don't want to do the parking structure, and all of a sudden you have a parking action plan that talks about, some year, it may talk about a parking structure will be needed sometime down the road. And so I don't want, you know, I don't want council, or council also, to be confused or concerned, "Why is staff still talking about a parking structure?" Because we are doing this parking action plan in order to meet the needs of the potential growth that will take place downtown.
Mr. Darbison?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and further to that, Mr. Joseph has reminded me that for retail revitalizations, parking is key, and therefore, at least the completion of the study to determine what the options are available to council for parking, because if you don't have proper parking, you'll not have revitalization for retail development purposes.
Okay. So members of council, yes, Counsel Kerrio?
Well, your worship, I agree with the staff. I think that, I think that the study on the parking structure should go back in, because it may show that we need a parking structure. Whether or not this council wants to fund it or not, it's a different story. But I think it should go back in. So I think if it, I think we did, yes, we. It's in the motion to take it out.
The motion right now is to remove the reference in one C to parking structure.
Yeah, I think we should put it back.
Counsel Kerrio's suggesting we should put it back in. You've heard some comments from staff, and it doesn't commit us to building a parking structure. It's the study that we have to do to get there.
You wouldn't want to have, we wouldn't want to go through this and then find out that we have to find out, or do it again, to find out we need a parking structure down the road. So this is going to tell us, depending on what we decide to do, whether or not we need a parking structure, and where it should go. So I just think it should be back in.
Counsel Iainoni?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Then we're back to one of us should have seconded Counsel DiDati's motion, which we didn't do. So in retrospect, I will say this, what I don't want to leave is, leave anybody's impression in anybody's mind that anybody around this table will support a thirteen million dollar parking structure. So I don't want to hear later on, "You passed it, so you support a thirteen million dollar parking structure." I want it clear that we'll leave it in because it's part of the report, but I don't want, I don't want to read in the paper, "We've approved a thirteen million dollar parking structure." I don't want anybody to leave with a misconception, so they can later say, "You guys lied, this is what you think, this is what we left here believing you were going to support." Well, we'll support a report. I think it's clear we're not going to support the spending of thirteen million.
And maybe premature to assume what everybody around this table's going to decide, so until they have, until they have the parking study.
Mr. Mayor, I would say that too, except we've had three votes within this term of council in regards to the thirteen million dollar parking structure. I'm not presuming anything, I'm basing it on our votes.
Yes, but we haven't had the parking study completed yet, so, members of council, we still don't know, we're still not with requirements at this point. We're going to call the vote at this point.
We don't have anything on the motion?
We do have a motion, actually. Sorry, Counsel Kerrio, you second the motion?
Yes, I'd like a friendly amendment that we put that back.
And then Counsel Iainoni?
Is that okay?
I would suggest you withdraw your motion, and then we go back to the recommendation, which was actually Counsel DiDati. So if somebody could counsel, could second Counsel DiDati's motion.
Hey, Counsel DiDati, you made that motion earlier. We have a second there, and Counsel Iainoni. We're going to call the vote. Aldo's in favor. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Confluc-? So, Kerry, you're nasty at this point. Thank you. Thank you again. Thank you to members of the public. Move on to the next item on the agenda, and I have some comments for council.
I would like to acknowledge the efforts of many volunteers who helped with the significant task of putting together our Canada's July first Canada Day parade and celebrations at Optimus Park. This year's event was hugely successful with the wonderful attendance and participation from so many of you in our community. I would like to extend thanks to Vito Skrenji and staff at Parks and Rec and Culture, along with his team of volunteers who helped coordinate and organize this year's Canada Day celebrations. It was a wonderful event, and we certainly look forward to doing it all again next year. I would also like to bring up some upcoming events to the attention of members of council in the community. The state of the Great Lakes Mayor's Conference of two thousand and seven, this later this week, I will be attending the Great Lakes Mayor's Conference to discuss the sustainability of the Great Lakes and St. Lawrence. As the world's largest freshwater resource and international treasure, the lakes are essential to the continued vitality of cities, townships, and counties along the shores and the surrounding watershed. The mayors have been asked to attend as stakeholders, and the waterways support the countless recreational, commercial, tourist, and cultural activities for citizens and visitors that drives economic development in shoreline communities, and supports the critical aquatic and coastal ecosystems, providing fresh drinking water for millions of people, and supporting the agriculture and the... agriculture and industrial activities. I'm also pleased to participate in these important discussions. On July 14th, the Royal Canadian Mint has created a new silver Niagara Falls thirty-dollar coin that will be unveiled by the mint in our city on Saturday. I look forward to attending the ceremony with members of council and seeing the new commander of coin, which will surely encapsulate the spectacular image of Niagara Falls. There's also a ribbon coming, a ribbon cutting coming forward on July 20th. Vincore is celebrating the completion of the first phase of their Niagara Sellers development on Friday, July 20th. This will also serve as a kickoff to the beginning of their second phase plan, the construction of fermentation and storage expansion. We are pleased to congratulate Vincore on these major milestones in their development. Also, we'll be experiencing the grand opening of the new Niagara Falls Party Department Station 6 in Crowland, which will take place on July 21st. This will be a significant day for the members of our community. The brand-new building at this site will complement the old structure built in 1970, which will now be used mostly for storage of additional equipment. The new building will house the fire trucks and boast a small meeting room, a kitchen, a modest gym area, and the firefighter pump test pit. This will greatly benefit the approximately thirty volunteers that work out of that station. Construction was started in the building last July, and it was completed ahead of schedule. The public is welcome to attend the grand opening and visit the new Station 6 building at 8037 Schistler Road on Saturday, July 21st, from 12 till 3 p.m. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is communications and comments of the city clerk. The first item is the status of the Armory Facility operating as a military museum. We have an information update, and I'd like to call on our clerk for his comments, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. Couple of things. At the time of the production of our council agenda, we had a communication signed by the Chair of the Niagara Falls Board of Museums, and it was an information report just giving council an update. On July the 4th, Mr. Beck, who's the president of the Niagara Military Museum Group, did send a letter requesting to speak to the, the item. Subsequently, on the 5th of July, there were a meeting that took place between the, city staff was present, council representation in the form of councillor Ling and councillor Maves, representatives from both the Military Museum and the Board of Museums were present. I would characterize the meeting as, as productive. There seemed to be a number of issues that were resolved, namely, some of the lease items that were outlined, that were outlined in the Phase 2 in Mr. West's letter. At the meeting, Mr. Beck indicated that the Military Museum was interested in being the sole tenant of the facility because of the multitude of exhibits that they've managed to collect over the years. And as a result of that, I provided council with a sort of updated memo dated July 6th. And the recommendation is that the Niagara Military Museum present a viable business case on how they would fund and operate their operation as a proposed sole tenant of the Armory. Now, you see that Mr. Beck is here, also, I know Mr. West is here as well. So, as far as whether it's necessary to entertain them this evening, I leave that up to council.
Pleasure, council. Members? Councillor Thompson?
Yeah, I would prevent anybody to speak that wishes to speak.
Okay, does anyone here like to make a presentation with regard to the museum?
Are you speaking to us, councillor?
Pardon?
Are you speaking to us?
Yes.
Oh, Schneider, I was. Is that report from the Board of Museums going in, and is that going to be going to public? Because if it is, we have to, we have to dispute it.
Okay, just for the benefit of the record, just identify yourself.
Oh, I'm Gary Beck.
And your address?
I'm the president of the Niagara Military Museum, also the president of the Royal Canadian Air Force Association here locally. And, and here, I'm actually here tonight to, Your Worship, members of council, city staff, veterans, ladies and gentlemen. But I am here tonight to rebut basically what has been put in a letter that has been provided to council, I believe, from the Board of Museums, which is really wrong. And what we did is we provided everybody with the chronology of the whole thing, the events. And if you read it, you will find there's a lot of mistakes that they made in their letter. I do, I, I'm not happy with their letter. I don't think anyone should do that to anybody.
Go ahead. Make your presentation.
That's, I can go through that, that'll take a little time. It'll take about seven or eight minutes.
Okay, Mr. Clerk?
Well, a couple of things. I don't want to speak for Mr. West, but I, I think that there isn't anything that's contained in that Board of Museums letter that is factually incorrect. I mean, the draft lease hasn't been signed. The third bullet, I guess, about attempts to have meetings, may be overstated. However, a meeting did take place on Thursday, which I think everybody walked away from the meeting thinking it was a very productive and good meeting. I think some, there was some clarification made on what the Board of Museums were expecting from the Military Museum as far as control issues. I think there was some concern on the part of the Military Museum about the Board of Museums signing off or saying, you could put this exhibit in your Military Museum or not. And I think that was clarified that that's not the case. There was some discussion about wanting to make sure that all the exhibits were safe, none of them had moths, those sort of things. So, I think a lot of that was clarified in the meeting on the 5th. And Mr. Beck, I know, did provide all of council with this document, which to me seems a little after the fact, when a lot of those issues seem to be resolved on July the 5th. All of council, I believe, has a copy of that report, so to have Mr. Beck go through for eight minutes, I'm not sure it serves any purpose, because right now where we're at is that the Military Museum would like to be the sole tenant, and so the ball's back in their court to prove that they could be the sole tenant of the facility.
Thank you. Yes, councillor Ling?
I would move the recommendation in the clerk's report that the Niagara Military Museum can present a viable business case on how they would fund and operate their operation as a proposed sole tenant at the Armory. I would just, I wouldn't want to leave it so open-ended, though. I think some sort of time limit, whatever is appropriate, six weeks maybe. I mean, if they're ready to roll now, presumably the funding is in place, so put six-week time limit on, that would be my motion.
Seconded by councillor Inonie, a discussion to that? Councillor Inonie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're asking everybody that comes forward to us to give us a business plan. We actually just went through a whole exercise in regards to having a market city, because we weren't presented a business plan. So, I think, I don't think it's unreasonable to ask you to bring a valid business plan forward for us to take a look at.
Okay.
Have you responded to that?
Yes, you can now.
You've got fifteen copies of a business plan that I presented quite a number of years ago, and that's still here somewhere.
Well, Mr. Clerk?
Well, through the Chair, that business plan, I believe, was related to you being one of the tenants in the Military Museum. Now, you're saying that you want to be the sole tenant, so I think it would be, it would be who you to revise that. May, I don't know, maybe the original plan did. You know, I have a copy somewhere in the clerk's office, but I don't have fifteen copies.
Now, Mr. Beck, we do have a motion on the floor. Now, can you prepare that?
I can, I can certainly reproduce ten or fifteen more of the one we have.
If it's current.
It's updated, but it was for the whole building originally.
Yeah, okay. Well, I think that's what the council's talking about.
I can do that.
Okay. Then, at this point, members of council, we'll call the vote, all those in favor. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Beck. If you can prepare that and supply it to the clerk, we'd appreciate it. The next thing on the agenda, of course, is the number two, Royal Canadian Legion Ontario Branch 396 Chippewa, a request to proclaim August 25th, 2007. That support our troops stay moved by councillor Thompson, seconded by councillor Fisher. Any discussion on the matter? Having seen none, all those in favor. The motion is carried. The third is a request from the Optus Club of Niagara Falls, requesting financial assistance for paving out their parking lot. And staff's recommendation moved by councillor Inonie, seconded by councillor Ling. Okay, a discussion? Councillor Thompson, councillor Kerrio?
Yeah, I'm wondering, due to the fact that this community group does an awful lot for the city, and it's utilized by just about every group, and certainly the city on numerous occasions, rather than outright denial, I wonder if we could get together with them and maybe we could use some city forces and assist them some way and to work with them to try to accomplish their objectives?
Mr. Clerk?
What's so humorous?
They did, they don't want.
No, that's exact, we had discussed that at senior staff, and I was exactly certain the discussion we were, and then the communication came through the mayor's office, and then we were informed that actually, the Optimus Club has applied for some funding, and to go to the next step, they have to have a rejection letter from the city.
Why the hell did you write that?
So, we have a motion on the floor. We'll call the vote, all those in favor. Motion is carried. Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, are there any additional items for consideration?
I hope I didn't jeopardize the funding with that, but, I guess, there's a report that was handed out to you today, CD 2007-15, for council's consideration.
That was in the package, Mr. Clerk?
Yeah, that was the adult entertainment appeal.
Yes, okay. And who will speak to that? Everybody we just received? Okay, motion?
You have to consider the recommendation.
Okay. Councillor Inonie, shall move the recommendation, seconded by councillor Fisher. Any discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor. Motion is carried, Nancy. Thank you very much. Ratification of Community Services Committee actions. I'm going to call on Chair, councillor Inonie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The following items should be ratified from tonight's meeting of the Community Services Committee. The meetings of June 25th, 2007 meeting be approved, that a grant be given to the residents of Niagara Falls for the Union Marsh drain, and that the west branch be removed, that the signed by law be deferred, and that staff approach Niagara Parks Commission regarding the Niagara Parks Commission Act with respect to the regulation of signs, that the lead, that the lead water service investigation report be received with information to council, and that the preferred design option for the raised medium on Highway 420 be deferred, and I shall move.
Okay, moved by councillor Inonie, seconded by councillor Maves. Any discussion on the matter? Having seen none, I'll call the vote, all those in favor. Motion is carried. Thank you very much. Ratification of in camera. Mr. Clerk?
Yes, there's a recommendation from in camera that council approve the offer to purchase by Bilibili Development for 5.5 acres at $223,000 an acre, and the property being part of Part 7 of Reference Plan 59R 13152.
Conflict noted by councillor Inonie. Okay. Motion approved the ratification of in camera. Councillor Thompson?
Yeah, I would so move, subject to a public rezoning application being contingent on the sale.
And that's written right in the agreement.
Seconded to that motion, councillor Maves. Okay, you heard the comments, any questions further? All those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, of course, is the consent agenda. Is there anything here that the members of council wish to deal with separately? Councillor Peter Angelo moves a consent agenda, seconded by councillor Inonie. Any discussion to that? The conflicts are so noted as well. Call the vote, all those in favor. Motion is carried. Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, the bylaws. Do you stress those?
Yeah, through the Chair, because of some changes, a couple of the bylaws will be dropped. We'll have to slightly revise the Drainage Act one, reflecting the decision earlier this evening, so that one will be specifically dropped. Obviously, the signed bylaws can be deferred as well, so that bylaw will be dropped. So, our renumbering will go from 2007-135 to 2007-146.
Okay, can I have a motion to introduce the bylaws, while they're getting their first reading? Moved by councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by councillor Fisher. Yes, council's heard the motion. Any questions or comments? Having seen none, all those in favor. Motion is carried.
Bylaws 2007-135 to 2007-146, we're at a first turn.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to give the bylaws a second and third reading? Councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by councillor Kerrio. You've heard the comments, the motion should say any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor. Motion is carried.
Bylaws 2007-135 to 2007-146, we're at a second and third reading.
Thank you. Members of council, new business. I have councillor Inonie, councillor Peter Angelo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sometime last term, and I think it was the last council, we had the giant Tiger Plaza come before us in regards to reconfiguring the McDonald's and the issues. We met a number of times, a number of us, with the residents, the area residents over there, the Orlando Avenue area residents. Within those public meetings, there were recommendations to the developer. I got a call this afternoon from somebody who's saying, look at, our life has become hell again with the, there's a pathway between the back of the plaza to Orlando Drive. The recommendation of the residents in the public meeting was the fact that that public pathway was going to be closed. The gentleman in question who called me said that none of the recommendations follow, none of the recommendations that the community gave the developer to date have been followed, and in contacting the developer have been told, we don't have to follow the comments made within that public meeting. So, maybe I'd like to make a motion that staff bring back the report highlighting what has taken place in regards to that development and the community's inputs into how the changes were supposed to take place and whether they've actually done, because according to the residents out there, it hasn't taken place yet.
Is there a second to that motion? Councillor Ling? Any discussion to it? Having seen none, all those in favor, the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you. Councillor, councillor Deodaddy? Okay.
Yes, Your Worship, my motion, it's been fairly high-profile, excuse me, in the media lately with regard to Mr. Cochran, and I would make a motion tonight to the effect that this council send a letter of support for Mr. Cochran making, taking the wire walk across the brink of the falls. I've got a couple of points here. One is, whereas the city's tourism sector has been experiencing six years of unprecedented challenges, and whereas a need like this would fascinate the media from around the world and create an avalanche of international attention and interest, and whereas Jay Cochran is not attempting a stunt, but rather a calculated performance as an accomplished professional, and whereas a great deal of money will be raised for children's charities, I would move that we send a letter, send a letter of request to the Niagara Parks Commission for consideration to allow Mr. Cochran to wire walk across the brink of the falls.
Is there a second to that motion? Councillor Peter Angelo? Any discussion to the motion? Councillor Ling? Conflict? Councillor Kerrio?
He was suggesting he would carry somebody over.
Sure, you'd be a commissioner, that's right. You'd be the one that they would do it to, so. Anyway, we have a motion on the floor. We'll call the vote, all those in favor. Motion is carried. Thank you. Councillor Peter Angelo?
Thanks, Your Worship. Your Worship, recently, I'm sure everyone read an article in the Review that talked about the possible changes that the region was considering to garbage collection, and one of the suggestions was that, I guess, the region only come around and pick up garbage every two weeks. I think, Your Worship, that in talking to some people, they believe that this would present a real problem, especially in the warmer months. Being a parent myself, I think I understand fully that soiled diapers only have a certain shelf life, and then after that, Your Worship, they start to grow things. So, I don't know exactly what the region's plan was. I don't know if you can give me some insight into it. If you can, great. If not, I'd just simply like to make a motion that the region actually entertain having any public meetings before they make any type of changes to garbage collection.
You may want to make a resolution, or pass a resolution by this council.
I, I will, Your Worship. I mean, I'll make that resolution. I don't know if you have any more information.
Sure. Sure. It was a, it was a discussion that came up in Public Works, and I was a council, it was just, it was a discussion. Our current diversion, as you know, is 43%. They're, they're trying to achieve 65%, and there was some discussion with respect to the fact if the collection were made on a fewer, fewer times, it would be, it would be possibly diverting more to the, to the recycling. But I can appreciate your point, in this case it would not be. And I've had expressed a concern by a number of our residents sent to us by either email or phone calls. I personally am prepared to take a resolution from this council to committee to tell them that this council does or does not support that recommendation. So if you're prepared to make that, I'd be glad to.
Yeah, I'm definitely prepared to make that, Your Worship. And I'd also, and I'd also like to say that I, I don't believe that collecting garbage every two weeks is going to cause me to increase the amount of recycle that I have. Everything that I have in my house that I can recycle, I already recycle. I think that collecting garbage every two weeks is just going to become an inconvenience, really.
Thank you, appreciate that.
So perhaps there's, perhaps there's other measures that they could look at instead of collecting garbage every two weeks.
Right. And I think on my own, I did some checking, I think our cost is about $3.05 per household per week, so it's not a lot of money, but certainly it, I think to change that service would be a greater detriment to our residents than the benefit.
And, you know, Your Worship, I've said it before, I can't help but saying it again, but I don't understand why two neighbors don't put the garbage abutting each other, and then the next two neighbors do that. I don't understand why we don't start a pilot program that we could see. I mean, it would eliminate half the stops that the truck actually has to make.
Sure.
I just don't understand why someone doesn't bring that to regional council. When the regional, Shado Bersik, I think that's his name, when he was here with a couple of other people, I remember mentioning it way back then, I've tried to contact someone from the region that apparently deals in the, in implementing the runs of the trucks to see whether or not they would do something like this. I, I just can't get any response, Your Worship.
Well, I can carry that to committee.
That's worth investigating.
I'd be glad, sure, I think it is worth investigating. I'd be glad to carry that. We have a specialist, Mr. Barry Friesen, who's acknowledged throughout the country as an expert who we've hired at the region, who's regarded in that respect, but we haven't heard that comment from him, but I can take that to committee as well.
Yeah, perhaps that can be part of the resolution as well.
Okay. So you're making a motion then to, to strongly suggest that the garbage pickup not change in the city of Niagara Falls, and that there be a garbage pickup, and there may be an effort to combine our garbage, our waste, our pickup, I should say, with regard to neighbors placing them at the same spot where possible.
Yeah, and I think, you know, if you, if you abup properties with someone and you put your garbage on, on your property, and the neighbor puts your garbage on their property, the truck only has to make half the stops.
Sure.
And the other thing, Your Worship, was public meetings, that the region would institute some public meetings before making any changes to garbage collection.
Okay, public meetings as well. There's a second to the motion? Counselor Maves? Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you.